Welcome to the 9:00 AM Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 Board of Deschutes County Commissioners meeting. At this time, please join me for the first item, which is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And then, so citizen input. I don't have anything in writing today. Is there anybody on Zoom call that with a hand raised possibly? Seeing none. Also, just kind of another note, we had a joint meeting with the city of Redmond last night, and that regional and local affordable housing needs presentation really put things in perspective, really valuable. So if there's somebody following that is hot on that topic, which we all should be, and I am, it was just a great lay of the land. What is affordable housing? What is it currently? Population estimates for the whole county also, not just Redmond. So that was great. Thank you, Tom, for being part of that last night also.
It was an excellent definition of what is affordable housing. Thirty percent of your income should be allocated to your rent and your utilities, not more than thirty percent, or your mortgage payment and your utilities. So they didn't mention property taxes. So and a lot of times those will come out of your escrow account, but it was clearly a great definition. But I do have one little message today for any of you Deschutes County residents that are really seriously worried about the number of vaccines that we've been getting. I suggest there's, I think, about 41,000 of you that have signed up to get the vaccination. And you know, we have not been getting our fair share. We only got 1,200. Please send a postcard to our governor, Governor Brown, Office of the Governor, and it's 900 Court Street, Suite 254, Salem, Oregon 97301-4047. If she gets enough postcards from us, she's going to realize a county should not be punished for doing an excellent job. I don't believe that's the Oregon way. So really, if we don't get our dosage increased, it's going to be really unfortunate. And I really don't believe we should be punishing a county that is doing an excellent job. Thank you to our health department. Thank you to the hundreds and thousands of volunteers that are helping with that program. It's so appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, consent agenda?
So move the consent agenda?
Second.
So item number six, approval of minutes of January 27th. There's just one note, and I'll just do it verbally. The Sun River Women's Club $2,000 donation from discretionary grants. This is page seven. I would just request that it just mentions it's out of the fundraising account because it didn't specify. So it's a simple little edit, and I'll follow up on it if there. I'm sure Sharon's probably following that right now. So with that-
Probably done.
Yeah, probably already done. With that proposed change, any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Action items at this time. So item number eight, consideration of B O C C meeting start times. So a little bit of history on this. We determined that let's make sure we're scheduling around a lunch break instead of sneaking right through it. And then also was mentioned that let's try not to be here, you know, at the past 5:00, 5:30 on a regular basis. So that brought us back to if we start at nine o'clock, we'll have a little bit more freedom to do a set of agenda items before lunchtime and a set of agenda items, maybe if there's a land use hearing at a time certain in the afternoon, which will get us to four or five o'clock or so. And that was discussed a few weeks ago. Last week, we had put nine o'clock as a start time, and now we have this week. So, Tom, any other kind of feedback or thoughts on this, how it works in the organization?
Commissioner, I think it'll work just fine. We'll adapt to whatever the board's will is. I think it will give us more time during the morning and not make things so rushed. So I think it'll be appreciated.
So and then also, just kind of for the media or people that follow us regularly, this is the moment where stating that we'll generally have a nine o'clock start time on Wednesdays unless otherwise noted.
Excellent.
Any other thoughts or?
Well, I tried to do it last year, and I can't remember what happened. Maybe perhaps COVID. But I really felt like it was much more businesslike if we start at nine in the morning. You know, I know there are sometimes a Wednesday morning, what's, Edco? Ready. Ready is Wednesday morning. So we might miss a bit of that, but I think it's good.
Well, and ready hasn't been a problem. I think I did do that last week. In fact, I was able to dial into that and be here without too much overlap. But just got to prepare because sometimes in the morning, it's emails or the last few items before a board meeting. But so everybody supportive, nine o'clock will be our published start time on Wednesdays. And then one o'clock on Monday afternoons. I got to a spot where we had talked about reconvening at 1:30 on Wednesdays or possibly setting land use sites for 1:30. So then my mindset is we would meet at 1:30 on Monday even though it's published for one o'clock. So we've got to be careful with our times, you know. So one o'clock in the afternoons generally for Wednesday and Monday unless otherwise stated also. So that's kind of the official statement. There is no, just no vote or anything.
And this afternoon, there's a hearing on a bill in the legislature related to prescribed fire that some people asked if I wanted to testify about. So us starting at nine and getting that one hour leg up on the day will make it much more likely that I can get there before.
And what time is that?
Before 15:00.
Oh, perfect. Yes.
And if I can, if I can make it, I can make it. And if I can't, then?
Well, and today is one of those days where we'll have a couple afternoon items. But no, I don't think we're going to go that far. So it'll really change our day when we do this also. Okay. At this time, item, item number nine. Well, sir, one more note on number eight. So we are committing to a COVID update at 10:00 between 10:00 and 11:00. That's the other kind of note with our Facebook Live, but also with our health staff. So then, you know, we might be in a situation where we have a little, you know, gap of items if we stand by for 10:00 also. So just acknowledging that. So at this time, item number nine, consideration of signature for intent to award contract. Cody Smith.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Cody.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. I have three notice of intent to award contracts for the board's consideration this morning. I certainly don't intend to take up the whole hour here. Shouldn't take till 10:00. But anyways, the first item I have is for the paving of Fryer Road project. The department prepared solicitation documents for this project. The scope of the project includes paving, shoulder repair, and delineation as well, some other work for the entire 5.6-mile stretch of Fryer Road between Highways 20 and Highway 126. The department advertised for bids for the project on January 13th, and we opened bids on February 3rd. Five bids were received. Before you this morning is a notice intent to award the contract to the apparent low bidder, High Desert Aggregate and Paving, in the contract amount of $1,494,741.50. Issuance of the notice intent to award today would begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to dispute award of the contract. If no protests were received during that period, then the contract would be awarded administratively. With that, I'll give it over to the board if there's any questions.
Cody, I have a question. I believe it was last summer, there was a federal program that was putting up white stakes along the shoulder of Fryer Road for, I believe it was like snow identification or something, their plastic stakes. What are they, if they're fixing the shoulder, what do they do with those stakes? Do they take them out and then put them back in again or something?
Yeah, so that work actually happened a couple years ago, and those are, those are roadside delineators. And yeah, the intent of those is to certainly in the event of, you know, a snow event where the striping on the road is not visible, that gives, as well as just during general nighttime driving, that gets a good, clear, reflective indication of where the edge of the road is. So yeah, with this, with this, and that was, that was delivered under a federal arts grant. That work was delivered by ODOT on several roads in the county, including Fryer Road. And yeah, so with our paving project, and this project includes shoulder repair, those, those existing delineators will be, will be pulled out of the ground and then relocated as needed. Some of those delineators was lost in the last couple of years since they were installed. So some of them will also be replaced with this project.
I think they were done on Fryer in 19. Because, okay, if it wasn't last year, then it was 19. Because I remember driving and wondering, okay, whose project is this? Is this a county project? So how long is that project expected to take?
Our paving project, we'd anticipate that this is probably two and a half weeks worth of work, maybe three. The intent is for all this work to happen, this will all be daytime operations. We will be, and this is included in the contract specifications, there will be a one-day closure at, for the Highway 20 approach, and also a one-day closure for the Highway 126 approach during that construction period to allow the contractor to successfully make that, that tie-in to the highway, the state highway right-of-way. So we don't, we don't have a full schedule from our contractor yet. So we don't presently know exactly when they're, when this fits into their, their work schedule for the year. Contract completion date for our contract is, is June 30th. So we want to wrap this up in this fiscal year. But other than that, some of those other details, we don't know yet.
Thank you.
So Cody, this is an overlay project. Is that what we think of it as? So a new asphalt on top of the existing road and repairs of the edges of the road?
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. So the first contractor's first step will be either using traditional excavation methods or using a milling machine to remove the existing four-foot wide trough on each side for the shoulder repair, put in new aggregate base and compact that, pave, pave over the top of that for the shoulders, and then do the overlay work on the, on the entire roadway width.
So it'll, it'll, it'll be a slightly wider road when we're done. I don't know if the traveling lanes will be wider, but there'll be more asphalt on the edge of the road, correct?
There will be a slightly wider shoulder. That's not to say we might have, we might be matching what our existing shoulder widths were some years ago, but, but just over time, we've lost, we've lost material on the shoulders there. So.
It'll feel like a wider road even if, yeah, because it'll be smooth edge all the way out to the, the edge of the road. Great.
Didn't somebody work on it, though, last year? Some of the shoulder spots up above the transfer station, those, they tried to fix it, I believe.
Our, our own county maintenance crews, we did a little bit of shoulder work. We had some, a culvert or two that we replaced in preparation for this project. There was also some road approaches that we had done some improvements on just with, with aggregate base. So yeah, so our crews had done that work, and it was, it was essentially in preparation for this project.
Okay. Cody, I'm, I'm just looking ahead at the other two items, and, and I'm curious about the competition for each of these. You know, so we got, we got competitive, you know, a lot of competitive bids for the first two, and then, and then the third one, only one bid. What, what, what is our process to put, put these opportunities out? Do we, do we have a list we maintain that we send these to? Is there, you know, a public place that, you know, these contract opportunities are posted to? Or, you know, kind of, you know, what is, what is the, what's the, what's the kind of universe that, that sees a solicitation like this before they, they propose?
Yeah. So just, just more kind of two parts, two-part answer here. So in general, when we're soliciting for whether it's public improvement contracts or bids or services, first, there's what state law tells us we have to do. And what we have to do is advertise in a, a paper of record that's circulated locally. So we advertise in the Ben Bulletin. Next, we have to advertise in the, at least once in a statewide publication, trade publication. So we advertise these in the Daily Journal of Commerce. Beyond that, yes, we do, particularly for our public improvement contracts, we maintain a, just a list of email contacts of contractors that we've done business with or who have contacted us and say, hey, they want to be on a distribution list. So when we post a new solicitation, and we post all our solicitations on the county website, county has a, on our website, we have a bids and RFP website that multiple departments use to, to house their, their requests for proposals or bid solicitations. So we keep, when, when we post on the website, we will send an email out to that distribution list. And then also, the, the county website also has a way that, that interested parties can sign up to receive email notifications as things are posted on the website, too. So with, with our email distribution list also, there are numerous builders exchanges and plan centers around not only Oregon, but also Southern Washington that receive the notice as well. So that, so they, they usually download the solicitation documents and make those available to their members as well.
Great. Thanks. So, so if we only receive one, one, one proposal on, on a specific opportunity, it's not for lack of people seeing it?
No, no. And I could, I could speak to that, that item when we get to it next year. In the case of this project, the paving of Fryer Road project, this is a, a bid enough, a big enough mainline paving job that it, that it sparks interest from, from paving contractors outside the area. I mean, they have the potential of, of bringing in a portable asphalt concrete plant and, and doing a project like this. So, so yeah, we had some pretty good competition on this one.
No, thank you.
So I move chair signature of document number 2021-040, a notice of intent to award the contract for the paving of Fryer Road, US 22 Oregon 126 project.
I second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Item number 10. Cody.
Okay. So this next item is a notice of intent to award for our, our contract for the purchase of road striping paint. So the scope of this contract included furnishing and delivering to our yard 25,000 gallons of yellow traffic paint, 25,000 gallons of white traffic paint that's used for not only our striping operations on the county road system, but we also, through the Central Oregon Public Works Partnership, provide road striping services for Crete County, Jefferson County, the cities of Redmond, Sisters, Madras, and then also the Crooked River Ranch Special Road District. Those, those services for other agencies typically account for about one-third of the material, the striping materials we're using every year. Those agencies reimburse us for that work, including the labor, equipment, and materials. So the department advertised for bids for this, this solicitation on January 8th. We opened bids on January 22nd. Four bids were received. Before you this morning is a notice of intent to award the contract to the apparent low bidder, Sherwin-Williams, in the amount of $430,000. And that comes out to $8.60 per gallon of paint. And that's actually five cents less than our current contract that we have with Ennis Flint, who is also a bidder on this, with, to this, in response to this solicitation. Our last contract, we, we executed back in 2019. This contract can be extended out to through the end of calendar year 2023, if agreed by most parties, by both parties. So it locks us into this price for, for this year. And then next, come next year, if, if this supplier still wants to honor that same price, we can stick with this contract. If they're looking at maybe needing to increase their price, then, then we would solicit again for, for a new contract. So as before, issuance of this notice of intent to award will begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to dispute the award of this contract. And if no parties submit protest during that period, then the contract would be awarded administratively.
So one question, how much green paint do we use?
Oh, no, it's going to be orange and black. We've got to do Oregon State this time.
Well, no, but seriously, the bike lanes at Spring River, that we do use a little bit of green paint. Is that the only spot we have green paint?
That's, that's presently the only spot where we've used green paint. And we're not, we're not purchasing that and applying it ourselves. The initial time that paint went down, we hired a contractor to do that. And we don't anticipate having to freshen that paint up on an annual basis. But, but when we do go to maintain that, then we'll probably just let that work happen through a minor contract.
Great. Well, and, you know, there, that's, it is kind of serious business. We, this came across as a discussion item at the Ben Metropolitan Planning Organization, too. Bike, bike pad discussion, which is wonderful. But the fact that the road department doesn't usually do green paint, you know, it was just, it was an interesting moment there, too. So that's a subcontractor. That's good to know.
Chris didn't pick it up because I believe he is a Beaver. So that could have been a problem. I'm surprised he didn't make him, make it orange and black.
So motion?
I, I move to approve board signature on document number 2021-065.
And I'll second that.
Just chair signature for a notice of intent.
Yes.
Just clarifying. So it'd be a chair signature, one person, one person's signature.
Oh, got it. Sorry. A motion, move to approve board signature, board chair signature for-
There you go.
Number 2021.
Just making sure, yeah, in case we end up having to all sign it, just because-
Got it. Thank you.
And you support that, Commissioner?
I second that.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Item number 11.
And real quick here, I'll just kind of clarify some process here with the board. So yeah, so, so when, when the board approves the chairman's signature of the notice of intent to award letter, usually the chairman will, will sign the letter immediately after the meeting. And then Sharon provides me with a copy of that, and we very quickly get that posted on our website. And that, that's what, that's what starts that one-week protest period. So, so this last item is a notice of intent to award contract for our annual purchase of pre-coated chip seal rock. So, so the scope of this contract includes furnishing and delivering to various stockpile sites around the county. Chip seal rock, pre-coated with asphalt oil that the department will use for our 2021 chip seal operations. In addition to using these materials for chip sealing 80 to 90 miles of county roads this year, the department will also, we also provide this service to all of the cities in Deschutes County through the Central Oregon Public Works Partnership. So on an annual basis, we're coordinating with the individual cities and seeing what their chip seal rocks, our chip seal needs are. And, and we usually devote at least a couple weeks, a few weeks every year during our chip seal season to performing that work for the cities. So the department advertised for bids for this contract on January 8th. We opened bids on January 22nd. We only received one bid. Before you this morning is the notice of intent to award the contract to the apparent low bidder, Knife River Corporation Northwest, in the amount of $728,920. Last time, issuance of this notice of intent to award will begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to dispute the award. No protests are received. Contract will be awarded administratively. Just to speak to the, the concern about competition on this project, this, when we let this contract, when we let this contract every year, we typically only have two bidders or really two serious bidders on this project, and those are Knife River and High Desert Aggregate and Paving, kind of the two main aggregate suppliers in the county who also have an asphalt plant. The, in the case of this year, we only received one bid, the bid from Knife River, because High Desert Aggregate and Paving just forgot to turn their bid in, is what they told us. So, so High Desert actually had this contract last year. I think they had every intent of, of competing for it this year, and they, and they just, they, they didn't get their bid turned in in time. So that's what happened.
Thanks.
So one question on the items, the bid results items. The, the sites all seem to be duplicated like two times. Is that different dates of delivery? Or what's the idea there? So Redmond Stockpile, Negus Transfer, item one and two, Young, three and four, Lapine, seven and eight. I'm just thinking, that's probably two different dates of delivery.
It's actually, yeah, and it's not, it's not very explicit on, on the bid results here, but it's actually different sizes of rock. So we have two different-
Sizes, okay.
Which have two different gradations, is what we call it, of chip seal rock that we use. The gradation is the, is the average diameter of the individual crushed aggregates. And it's, it's also a distribution of different sizes of aggregates. And so we use, we use two different gradations. One's a 3/8 inch minus, which is what we use in the travel lanes. And then in, in some applications, we also use a, what's called a quarter ten rock, which is a smaller rock that we use on shoulders for, for, for bikeway shoulders. And then, and then I believe also there's, there's some of the city partners like to use that for their travel lanes as well. And then also, I believe in the case of Redmond, there's, there's some applications when we're working, doing work for the city of Redmond, but they don't like, like to use the pre-coated rock. So.
Good. Thank you for the explanation.
So I move approval of board chair signature of document number 2021-066.
I second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So at this time, seeing we're going to be working towards a 10:00 start for a health update, there is another kind of road-related other item that I could bring up. We did receive an email, community members for Huddle Neighborhood or Huddle Road proposed improvement. So this is from the TSP. So I have a copy of the one-page email as a reminder. So interesting response to this email that was sent to the board and their staff, saying we'd like a response by the 10th of February, which is today. And it's really the community request of, you know, what the Board of Commissioners' thoughts on this project, as in to proceed as discussed, negotiating, you know, kind of slowing down the, the traffic patterns, because there's also a sub-request, which is please don't do this project. So I'm just trying to make sure we're real clear in our response here, you know, as a Board of Commissioners. So thoughts, just, just for a response from the board level?
I think it's really important to minimize the speed. And by the design, I know we have the capacity to do that. I do believe that there is some work that does need to be done. But definitely, listening to the community, I think, is enormously critical. They have a very special neighborhood. And I would hate to see large freight trucks going down that road, you know, 60 miles an hour. That would just be not a positive thing.
Similarly, I'm, when, when I first heard about this issue, I was very concerned about the, the potential for cut through, through the neighborhood and the, and speeds and may try and, trying to maintain the, the character of the, the community, the, the character of the neighborhood. Initially, I was also really puzzled at, at the need for this project because as far as I can tell, there's not a lot of growth anticipated in, you know, feeding into Huddle Road. But I, I feel like the, our, our road department has done a, a, a really good job of listening to the concerns of the community and trying to address through the design of the project, many of the concerns that have been put forward by neighbors in the Huddle Road area. So I don't know whether we're, you know, all the way to a place where the people in that neighborhood feel like their concerns have been addressed or not. But I, I feel like we're very close. So that, that's where I see things right at the moment.
Great. Yeah. So I remember, you know, pulling through on the, the little covered bridge years ago, just kind of trying to say, oh, what is this? You know, just as a- You know, just as a community member, as a commissioner also. And you kind of zigzag across some, some unpaved roads. And then if, if you go to dial, it becomes real clear. You know, there's a right-of-way that's on the map, between parcels, straight line in there. And then if you really true-follow that unpaved portion, you're going across private lands, you know, kind of the, the place where you'd think you're driving on a public road, but it's not. So that was a moment for me, seeing that. Also, you know, just completing that straight, straight road there, it is a connection that's not there currently, but it has been in the transportation system plan for, you know, 10 and 20 years, the fact that, oh, this is a, a future connection, a future build-out. So I kind of conclude the same thing. Let's be very, let's communicate as much as we can and need to, but proceed with this connection and, you know, honor the TSP as, as it was written many years ago. So, yeah, it sounds like we've all, yeah, been involved with this. As I say, I've driven, you know, around, you know, from Tumalo roadside and back into some of the side roads, just to really understand the, kind of the lay of the land and who's out there in some of the, the parcels. It's a wonderful neighborhood, obviously. So then, thank you for that, as three commissioners. I think, you know, Chris is, Chris Dodia, the road director, would be able to provide kind of the position of Deschutes County stating on this date that we're proceeding with a TSP improvement to this road in partnership with community input, which is kind of right where we've been for many years now.
Definitely don't want to lose the charm of their community and the safety that they can actually walk on, next to the road safely. Want to keep that going forward.
Well, and there's tools, you know, to keep it, you know, slower speeds with, I think there's talk about, you know, curbs and medians and intersection improvements to really make it so you're not, it isn't just a straight shot to barrel down. It's really just a meandering road through that area.
Right. And, and they, you know, when I heard about the, the planned shoulder, you know, there's going to be an extra wide shoulder that, that is fairly level and has a good surface for people to be able to, to continue to walk, not in the road, but just alongside the road, when hopefully there, there won't be a whole lot of traffic on the road, and it'll still be very pleasant to walk next to it.
Well, and we just heard about, you know, even future, you know, 10 years later, after something's been paved, that when they, when they do a chip seal and shoulder improvements, you're really getting that shoulder back to that, that trail-type condition. And we do that all around the county also. Okay. Well, so that's direction discussion. Tom, you can share that with Chris Dodia. I know Cody Smith's online. Chris, maybe he was able to hear about that. And, you know, if it's a letter or just a direct communication, we'll figure out what the appropriate step is there. So at this time, we do have, yeah, 25 minutes or so before a health update, so we could do some other items, which will clean up the end of the day. And Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, commissioners, I have several. I sent a note to Whitney. There was a couple letters that we prepared for board consideration that hopefully she saw, and she'll be down in a few minutes. But there was one letter the board requested last week that was provided to you, a hard copy in your box, to AOC, to accompany our annual dues payment. So we tried, hopefully you all have a copy of that. I have an extra one here if you don't. But tried to capture the request to basically commend AOC for their work, both in coordinating counties' voices with respect to pandemic-related financial assistance and other directives coming from the state associated with the pandemic. And then a sentence in there to, again, compliment them on staffing up in preparation for the legislative session that we're now in. So happy to discuss it, make any changes or amendments that the board would like.
Thank you for that letter. I thought it was important to send a positive letter. I've, you know, seen a major participation by Gina Nichols. She, I don't think she missed a 7:00 AM call, and now they're 6:45. So she has been a wonderful leader of that group.
And beyond Gina, who, who is great, the staff who have been running the legislative committees or the committees from Natural Resources to Health and Human Services to Transportation, Development, Public Safety. They, it is, you know, my, just my impression from these first six weeks in office is that it's a really top-notch group that, that is providing a lot of value to counties.
But, and I really do like the, the statement, we'd like to compliment you in bringing a full staff legislative team, because that has been the spot. It's been a time of kind of rebuilding an organization. And then this is the annual dues. As a participating member of Association of Oregon Counties for Deschutes County. And I was on the, the Budget Committee and the AOC District Two Chair, so I was in the leadership in the last couple of years on this. And it was a, it was a discussion about, are we leaning into this to make this a strong legislative group? Which I advocated yes, so I'm glad that, you know, the commissioners in Deschutes County are supportive of this direction. And we've also seen, seen that kind of business-like inflation number added to the dues, you know. So we have, I've seen it go from 50-something thousand to 60, to 65 now, but it, it is that time to do that. This is our full-on legislative support during a session like this. Counties are a special level of government, and we do represent all the people inside and outside cities, just like the state legislature does. We don't have the authority to change laws. But when a unfunded, you know, mandate of some sort, or, or, you know, something just doesn't sound right from the county's point of view, usually doesn't sound right from all 36 counties' point of view. So that's the value of this. And counties have different opinions also, which we see at those meetings. Yeah. Great. Well, so there's support for this letter. Do you want to vote on it?
Minus motion would be great.
Okay.
So I move we sign the letter to AOC regarding attaching it with our check for annual dues.
My second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? And chair votes yes.
I guess the one other thing I, I would like to say is that I, I do, I, I don't fully understand this yet, but there's, I sense that there's a challenge getting all of the counties to contribute. And I hope that, I hope that Deschutes County making this contribution helps, kind of, you know, helps to encourage other counties to all step up.
I agree. Okay. Whitney, thanks for joining us. So this is our other items before a 10 o'clock COVID update.
For the record, Whitney Hill Administration. At your meeting last week, Commissioner Adair had flagged that AOC would be preparing some communication regarding federal relief package and the, the contribution that that may have directly to county government. And so AOC did send forward some, some language for consideration that we've adapted for a draft that's before you now. And this essentially is asking that the American Rescue Plan include relief funds for state and local governments, and kind of the importance of that money coming directly to local governments for the impact it can have locally here in the community. So this is very, very close to the draft that AOC sent, and I just, we wanted to get this in front of you for your consideration and any updates that you'd like to, to see made to this draft.
So we also have this other proposed letter directly to Senator Wyden?
And that was, I had drafted that as a mock-up prior to the, the language that we received from AOC, which I think is more robust. I think generally the letters are communicating somewhat in the same message, but I think if I had a preference, the draft language from AOC struck me as a little more comprehensive. So I'd, I'd propose that we consider the, the letter that I just put in front of you, but obviously that's at your discretion.
Thank you for doing this, Whitney.
Yep, definitely.
I thought it was, Gina had worked with the governor and with that funding, and I felt like she, you know, we need to get on the front of this and not, not have it happen again.
I, I was, I, I liked the letter, our draft letter that we had, but this, you know, this letter does, says, you know, it hits a lot of the same themes and, you know, and it's a little, it's a little bit fuller of a letter, so.
So, excuse me, there's some statements in here. I mean, Deschutes County and rural Oregon is seeing population growth. Just today, we're, you know, yesterday, we've been notified that we're going to be able to step down a category in COVID level, and we're going to see economic activity blossom a little bit. So there's, there's some blanket statements in here that, you know, yes, we've been significantly impacted, but the budget of Deschutes County has already been, for the current activities that we've done, has been backfilled by the carriers. So I, I just think of what's the scope of this? You know, I mean, are we talking about the next three or six months, or a year, a year and a half from now? I do know and support that we're going to be in managing COVID crisis mode probably for 12 to 18 months, but hopefully it's fading out, and we're not going to see a big, and we don't know what the future brings. So then it just brings the big picture of, you know, this is national, United States of America debt that is going to be large, and just acknowledging that. So I'm just pointing out the fact that there's, there's a balance to this, too. If we have a vibrant economic activity and, you know, new houses being built and, and people be able to get a job, hopefully, you know, our, our economy can just roll along instead of having to say, okay, let's wait till the government backfills something or fixes something. So I don't know, I'm just, just sharing words at this point.
I mean, you know, one of the tensions, and one of the tensions in my mind is, do we want to pay for this stuff ourselves? Or do we want the federal government to, you know, to, to cover our, our work in the area of COVID response, the way they are, they, the way that they're offering to cover countries across the, you know, or counties across the nation? Because, you know, the, the, the things that we're doing and the things that we've been doing with, you know, up to now, Federal CARES Act money, I mean, those are, those are real costs. And it doesn't seem like the county had a, you know, an appetite to spend our own general fund dollars on those things. So, you know, how, it, you know, if, if, if the, if we don't ask for the federal support, are we willing to pay for contact tracing after March, you know, out of our own pocket, or pay for, you know, the costs? I guess the vaccination clinic might get covered by FEMA, but, you know, contact tracing, the kinds of business support we've been able to offer, that's, in my mind, that's, that's, that's the choice. Do, I, I do think that we need to continue to respond to COVID. And if we don't ask for federal support for that work, are we willing to pay for it Just my impression so far is that we're, we're not really excited about, you know, about expending large amounts of general fund dollars on these kinds of functions.
Well, and I don't know that it's large amounts. So, and we can, you know, I'm just, these are high-level discussions at this point. We could look at more detailed numbers. But, yeah, we were able to fund and spin up a local emergency management before we knew we would be reimbursed with CARES Act dollars from the federal government for some of these services. So now I do feel like we're at a point where we're basically, you know, and we have future FEMA reimbursements possibilities, and that's still federal dollars. But we're, we're almost, for all the quick decisive choices we made, not knowing if we'd be reimbursed, we have been reimbursed. So I don't, I've already made that choice as a sitting commissioner, the fact that, yes, we are going to lean into this and provide the contact tracing and, you know, Health Department, Emergency Management Services. So as I say, I don't know what the next 12 months are going to be like, so this is just truly our discussion. So, any other?
Well, I just believe that these funds are going to be allocated on a population percentage basis. I mean, that's the equitable, fair way. And if that happens, we will get our fair share. I would hope it would be amount within reason. What are we talking about, 350 billion? So we would get our fair share of that directly, and it would be so much more time-effective and cost-effective if we get that amount and we know exactly what we have to deal with and we can budget accordingly. But when the funds went to Salem, then it seemed like they, it was hard for them to come back to Deschutes County. It was hard, you know, we had all, we had to spend a lot of time, but as it were, to get our reimbursement. So this would definitely be more time effective, and especially if it's per population, then it's going to be fair, and, and we'll know what our budget is. So, you know, definitely, you know, vaccinations, testing, critical services are, they're not cheap. So it would be great to know, okay, this is what we can do.
Well, so I guess, big picture, I almost support this other proposed letter was written to, directly to Senator Wyden instead of the AOC letter. I guess that's, that's kind of the bottom line, because I'm not opposed. I mean, if there's a big package coming out, we're going to help, you know, through the Health Department, Emergency Management, let's do it. So the clear, you know, succinct statement is, you know, please provide resources directly to local governments in support of, you know, public health. So I guess, maybe, that's, you know, bottom line, I guess that's what I'd be saying. I'd support this shorter version of the letter.
I usually like shorter, but in this case, I do think this is, the AOC version is clearly better, you know, the second to the last paragraph, a direct allocation to counties.
Same message, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that is the critical, and it explains all the things that we actually spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, but that's a critical line. If that could be, like, maybe in bold, that, you know, a direct allocation to counties, that line, I mean, that is what we are really asking for.
Great. That's good, too. Yeah, maybe make that one.
I mean, the good news is, it's, it's, it's on one page, you know, and, but that's the critical line.
I like that. So as I say, and I, I have these discussions in the, in the fact that, you know, trillion dollars is a lot of money, and it's debt, and it's going to be out there for generations. So that's, that's one of my mindsets. And also, having these dollars come through to support businesses and individuals directly is wonderful to support an unstable system. But there's a, there's a, an inflation step out in the future, too. And that's, I just, I have that in my mind, the fact that we're going to have a possible inflation, you know, hyperinflation phase coming in the future that we could temper by, you know, working hard as individuals and small business owners, is, is kind of the concept. I'm just saying, that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
No, I know. Well, the prior money hasn't even all been spent. That's what they're saying, that that's sitting out there somewhere in the clouds. So, and of course, we really don't want more debt, but if, but if they are actually going to sign the dotted line for more debt for our grandchildren, then I want us to get our, our, our applicable percentage. So, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not thrilled about the doubt. But if you saw the report this morning that I watched on 21 regarding restaurants in the state, and how many restaurants have quit this month, or January, they just, the arrow, the line was just like straight down. I mean, there are so many of them that have been impacted, you know. A couple thousand dollars that we gave out as grants was a drop in the bucket for what they've been dealing with. And, you know, I'm just glad that they can go back inside, you know, but it's only 25% of their capacity or 50, whichever is lower. So it's, it's a rough time for small business here.
The, the economic fallout of COVID is very much, very much upon us right now. And relief stimulus is an opportunity to, to address that. I mean, if we want to spin out into, into, you know, national, you know, the national politics and, and debt and trade deficits and things like that, you know, during, during the, during the four years of the Trump administration, when the economy was doing pretty good, you know, the first three, three and a quarter at least, when the economy was doing pretty good, we still, we added to, you know, we only added to our federal debt, and our trade deficit got worse. So, you know, that was a time when, you know, when the economy was good, increasing the federal debt, you know, I don't think that was an appropriate time to, to increase, you know, to, to increase our federal debt. Right now, we're in an economic and to, to increase our federal debt. Right now, we're in a, in an economic and public health crisis. So if there's, if there's any time to spend money to, um, weather the storm, I think it's right now. So I, I, I appreciate in the long, long term, the desire to, um, mind our, you know, mind our deficits and mind our debt, but, um, just in the context of the last five years, if there was a year where you should be incurring some debt to try and, you know, stave off disaster, this is it. And, and so I don't, I don't have a problem with a $1.9 trillion COVID relief package.
Well, it's, it's not our decision, the 1.9. That's clearly not our decision. So.
Okay. Well, as I say, I mean, this is great discussion. Uh, there's a proposal to bold align in this, uh, a letter which I support. I mean, as I say, I'm not against anything here, uh, just, just laying out the, the thought process. So is there a motion to support this letter?
Oh, I move we support the letter, the AOC letter in this case, um, for, uh, all of our signatures to be sent to, I'm assuming what Wyden, Merkley, Congressman Benz, the Pres-
Prepare individual letters for members of our federal delegation. So you'll have a series of letters to sign and then we'll get those submitted electronically.
Great.
My second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Next.
One additional item, and I'll end this off to Commissioner Dare in a moment, but, uh, the commissioner has had conversations with, uh, Schut's National Forest Staff and with our sheriff's office regarding, uh, the abundance of abandoned vehicles, uh, in the China Hat Road area. And, uh, wanted to bring up, uh, a discussion on whether the county would be willing to financially support removal of those vehicles.
Yes. Last Wednesday, um, the community put together a Zoom conference call with an excellent presentation of all kinds of pictures from their community and what they're dealing with. And, um, you know, working with the Forest Service, Holly Jukes was on the call, as Kevin Larkin. Our sheriff, Shane Nelson, was on the call. And they were looking for a way to start cleaning up that neighborhood with, you know, they've, you know, you've got burned out vehicles, abandoned vehicles, you know, just, it's going to be a huge process. But, um, Ed Keith looked to see if there were any kind of grants and because it's on federal forest land, he's had me go over to, um, our sheriff and Shane said he would be more than willing to help move those out, but there is a cost involved with the, um, towing. So haven't quite gotten all those details yet. And then yesterday I had a conversation with Congressman Benz's office. Brianna, who works for Congressman Benz, was on that call too. Um, and we're just trying to think, okay, what is it we can do really to start help, you know, that neighborhood? The 150 different, um, individuals that are living there and what they're doing. But then there's also abandoned things that can be cleaned up. And if we start really making that a safer neighborhood, I think it's really important. So I, um, I still have, you know, I'm still trying to circle around with all the important parties on this, but, um, it's, it is a problem and, you know, it's, it's like a fire danger. And where it is, um, I know it's right by, not too far from Tom's house, um, Woodside Ranch. And, you know, it's right there and we'll, you know, hopefully more things can happen that will make all those communities a bit safer.
So, well, and you mentioned towing of abandoned vehicle.
Right.
Removal of abandoned vehicles is kind of the, the ask.
One of, uh, like a, a really interesting example of from around the state is in Clackamas County, where the county plays a really active role in basically getting trash off of federal public lands. Um, and they do that, uh, in Clackamas County, they're able to do that because when they do thinning projects, they, um, they're working with, they're working with timber that's actually valuable. Uh, so they generate, uh, a lot of what's called a stewardship credit, stewardship contract retained receipts. And they're able to then convert that money into cleanup activities. So that, that, the, the county forester and the county natural resource department over there is, is an active partner with the Mount Hood National Forest in that way. We don't have the, we don't have the luxury of having that kind of timber value to, to translate into cleanup activities, but, um, I, I would encourage us to think creatively about, uh, what monies we do have that, um, that you could make a connection to the public lands on, you know, that there are things like, pilt monies, payment in lieu of taxes, which, you know, comes to us because we have a substantial amount of federal land ownership in, in Deschutes County. Or there are things like transient room tax dollars that, you know, the public lands are one of the major reasons that people come here to visit. So, you know, there, in, in my mind, that is a, that's a, a meaningful connection. You know, the public lands are the reason why people come here. You know, it's spending some of the transient room tax dollars to clean up the public lands to, you know, kind of maintain the golden goose. It, it, it seems appropriate. So I, I would not just support, um, the idea of, um, the county investing in, you know, and, and building these partnerships to clean up the public lands. But I'm, I'm suggesting, just off the top of my head, two potential ways to, to, two, two potential places to look for funds to, to pay for such work.
I, I was just thinking through the process of, uh, you know, we have private land in, and this is half joking, but, you know, private land property owners that have, are able to open up a code enforcement case on their neighbors when it's a truly, uh, you know, bad situation. And, and this is a situation where it's our federal lands, the people's land that, uh, uh, you know, it's just, it's growing and growing, uh, issue. So, uh, do we have a kind of estimate? Uh, you know, I mean, if we had one car towed from an area and somebody went through and kind of cleaned up the, the garbage that's on the ground around it, do we think of that as a couple hundred dollars or, you know, I'm just thinking scope?
Well, uh, commissioners, uh, what we have done for, uh, some time, and this kind of gets a little bit at Commissioner Chang's comments. We work actively with both the, the Forest Service as well as our sheriff's office and community justice work crews who often, uh, will send out crews to clean up, you know, more, uh, I guess traditional garbage and trash on public land, all public land, not just the national forest. And we waive, uh, the dump fees to take it to the landfill to be, um, disposed of. So we do actively participate and financially contribute, in that case, more in terms of forgone revenue than actual expense. Unless you consider the expense of running the work crews and sending them out to do that kind of cleanup. So that is a role that we play already, uh, in maintaining and helping to clean up our public lands. In this case, uh, you can't take an abandoned vehicle, uh, to the landfill. So the sheriff's office does have maintain contracts with a number of different towing companies, you know, typically for abandoned vehicles, uh, in the public right of way along the roads, where the, the towing company, uh, actually can make money through the impound fees that are charged to, uh, the owner of the vehicle for towing it to their yard. For abandoned vehicles that have no value to the owner, um, that's something that they, they must eat for the most part, eat that cost of taking it usually to a, a scrap yard, uh, for, you know, any salvage value that might, uh, result from the, the metal and so forth in the vehicle. In this case, there's, there's probably very little of that yet. Um, so there is a cost. And, and although I've not spoken to the sheriff's office yet, yet, and I'm happy to do so to kind of get an estimate of what, you know, what those costs might be, we would likely be paying either the sheriff indirectly, uh, to the towing company or perhaps the towing company directly for just the, the straight cost of going in, finding and, um, you know, and in many cases, the vehicles aren't going to be, you know, have tires or wheels to move. So there's more effort in placing the vehicle on a, on a flatbed or to haul off, uh, would be for that cost. My, I just ballpark estimate, I'm guessing it's probably one to $200 per vehicle. Uh, but I, I don't have a sense of how many there might be or, or how those costs might pile up. But I'm happy to follow up directly with the sheriff's office to try and, uh, come up with an estimate.
Well, how, I'm thinking leaning right into it. I mean, how about we authorize, you know, 10 vehicles or, or something like that? Just, and then we'll know what the numbers are. Let's go practice taking 10 vehicles out and somebody can point them out and just go grab them. And then we'll run with those numbers for a future discussion. I mean, cause.
Pilot project.
Yeah.
A mini pilot project. And the interesting thing, but right now, of course, we can't have the community justice crews, I believe, because of COVID. So the deputies have been cleaning up and those people are very valuable members of our community and having safety elsewhere. And I know that the, the community is planning on cleanup. I offered, I offered to go down and help clean up. I think it's really important. You know, there's a lot of damage that's been done to the, um, you know, the forest down there. So there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done, but no, I think that would be great. So, um, I move we have a pilot project.
There you go.
Let's see what it costs to take out 10 burned out or burned out and rusted.
And then report on the cost.
Yes.
There you go.
I'm just thinking, Tom estimated, you know, but $200 or more, even if it was, even if it was a thousand dollars a piece, that's, that's, I guess that's still only $10,000. So that's.
Yeah. So I'm thinking a couple thousand, less than five, uh, you know, if it's $200, we're talking $2,000. So that was my thought process.
I did get my car towed once. Oh my gosh. It went about five blocks and it was, I think it was like $200.
Well, but hopefully there's, these are abandoned vehicles with scrap value of, you know, I don't, we don't even know. But yeah, I mean, if, if we were to say, go pick up this vehicle and send us the bill, let's find out what that costs up to 10 times. That's kind of my thought process. So you support her motion then?
Second, yes.
Okay. And we've had discussion, putting thoughts around what we're talking about. Uh, so any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So, there you go. 10 cars off this, in federal land. We, we understand.
Interesting learning experience.
Yeah. So at this time, uh, with the, the great discussion we've just had, we have a time certain COVID-19 update, item number 12. And we're standby to make sure we're, the presentation's going and Facebook live video. I'm seeing a nod in the back. Okay. And a thumbs up. Very good.
Hey.
Yes, please proceed.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for inviting us. I hope you can hear me. Yeah. Can you hear me, please?
Yes. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Thank you for inviting us. Uh, for the record, my name is Nahad Sadr Azodi. I'm the director of public health for Deshute County Health Services. I'm joined by, uh, Dr. George Conway. He's the director for health services. We also have, uh, two additional colleagues, um, in their normal, uh, respective roles. Sergeant, uh, Nathan Garby is our county's emergency coordinator. And, um, Chris Wyler is the Deshute County Health Services, uh, uh, operation officer. But, uh, so that's in their normal roles, but, uh, they're currently, uh, part of the incident command structure. And I believe they're here, uh, in that capacity and there'll be an opportunity for them to shed some light on some of the discussions and strategies being, uh, considered for, um, the short and long term incident command structure and response. And this is in direct, um, response to Commissioner Chang's, um, important questions from last week. So I will get started with, uh, update. Um, it's a fun week to present because we keep seeing the numbers go down. So you're going to see a smile on my face while I'm presenting. And, uh, I'll try to be as efficient as possible so that we have ample time for our colleagues, Nathan and Chris. So before I get started though, let me, as always, thank Jenny Faith for the data analysis and Morgan Emerson for the messaging. And of course, a huge, um, thank you to our health services staff and community partners for their great efforts around rolling out vaccination efforts and responding to this pandemic with case investigation, contact tracing, testing, wraparound services and other important interventions. Uh, we are of course doing this work on top of delivering important non-COVID services, um, such as behavioral health, reproductive health, STD HIV prevention and others. So this is where the fun begins, at least, uh, for this week. This is, and I have to say, uh, commissioners, that I did send the slides last night. There are slight changes as you can expect, uh, up to the like last minute of this presentation. We're receiving information and data. So you might see some, um, differences in what you have in front of you and what we're presenting right now. So I beg for your patience and grace on that.
Nahad?
The slide, yes, Commissioner.
Um, I know, okay. So the death went up to 48. That was actually, I think, reported yesterday, I saw it. And it was a December death. So it's almost a month and a half later. Do you have any history why that one was, um, just picked up? Now we're up to 23 deaths in the year 2020?
Yeah. So Commissioner, the, we've had some, and I suspect this is the case here, I don't have the individual, uh, sort of, um, specifics on this, but I do know that we've had some data related matters, where, um, we've had even deaths from earlier months reported later. So I think this is a data issue, but, um, the specifics of it, we can offline as we don't want to divulge any, um, information in public regarding the individual death. But I'd be happy to follow up on that. So this slide does show the number of new cases by week. As I mentioned, it's, uh, looking good for the last three weeks as we see a trend, the downward trend. Um, last week we had 161 cases, uh, reported, um, which, um, actually, as you will see later in the slide deck, it helps with, uh, downgrading our risk level as well. As of yesterday, uh, on the left corner, you will see that there are 5,572 total cases and 48 deaths, which is, uh, one more than what we had, uh, reported yesterday. And so far this week, um, also included in the total numbers, uh, we have had 10 new cases reported. So we've had a great start to this week. Of course, we want that number to be zero, but 10 is definitely an improvement, uh, from previous weeks. This is the age breakdown, uh, uh, of the patients, uh, with COVID. And, uh, frankly, we don't see much of a, the difference here or change in patterns. Majority of the cases are among, are, uh, among, uh, young adults, 20 to 29. And, um, more than 50%, around 55% of the cases are among 20, 30 and, uh, 40 year olds. This next slide, um, reflects the testing capacity as well as demand in our, um, communities in Deshute County. Pretty much in the last, uh, few weeks, we are seeing, uh, around, uh, between 3,000 to 4,000 tests that are being done. There was, uh, an unusual, um, number of tests during the week, last week of December. And as I mentioned in previous week, uh, that particular bar or week reflects, uh, issues around data where we had a big data dump, um, of testing during that week, um, as well. So I, I suspect Commissioner that the, Commissioner Dare, the question you raised around death is also reflective of some of the data issues we're seeing. There was a major slowdown in our, um, database, um, processing. So I imagine that's a reflection of that as well. What's good news here is, uh, that the positivity rate is going, um, down. It continues to go down and it's, uh, roughly around 3% at this point, which is really good news. This next slide is, um, around our hospital capacity. It's a regional, um, slide. It's a regional data, uh, or indicator. And, uh, it reflects, uh, the tri-county region. It's, uh, the, it's from St. Charles Medical's, uh, Health System. Here, um, what we do see is also a downward trend in terms of hospital admissions. As of this morning, there were 14 admissions, COVID-related admissions, uh, six of, um, six of which are from Deshute County. Uh, ever hospitalized as of Monday stands at 194. And this next slide is basically showing the patterns in, uh, on the above bar, uh, in terms of new cases per week. And in the bottom is, uh, average weekly admissions. And it's not really an apple to apple comparison. It does reflect some correlation. Uh, but frankly, we do need to see some, um, data. We need, we need to see more data in order to, um, discern a clear pattern here. Now I did add this, uh, slide. Now, I did add this slide in here because it's going to basically inform the next slide. In terms of our case rates, we are below 200 based on the drop that we saw in the last couple of weeks. And that means, and even though it's not reflected here, because the latest graph will not be published for another couple of days, or it hasn't been published until now, maybe later today, what we will see here is the Shute County moving from extreme high to high risk. And that means the color will probably change to orange. That's great news. And there is a cause and effect here. It's not by accident. It's really a reflection, primarily a reflection of our the Shute County residents and community members adhering to preventive and preventive measures related to mass usage, physical distancing, hygiene, and being outdoors more than indoors, and being careful around socializing, especially outside their bubbles. So there's a cause and effect here. And just to mention that this downgrade in risk profile means that there will be additional activities that will be permitted in our communities. The details are provided here. It's difficult to read this slide, of course, but it's available online as well. And we're working with our business partners and others to support them as they venture into this phase.
But I'll just acknowledge that this chart has been sent out by the Chambers of Commerce. So people are really, once you see this, it really, the bullet points are the ones that explain the 25% occupancy indoor dining allowed. So yeah, you can't read it, but it, that's where it's documented.
Great. Thank you. So now I will hand off to George to take us through the vaccine data.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, George Conway, Health Services Director. It's good to meet again after last evening's joint workshop in Redmond. I wanted to update things, including answering some of the questions that were posed in the latter part of that meeting yesterday, the latter part of our section. So first, this is the vaccination data, and we're trying out a new, if you will, yardstick approach. I'm sorry, there's a tiny artifact in it, but you can see that there's, the Shute still is moving in a very substantial way to vaccinate the population. We're now approaching 15% vaccination. So you can see on the little, the map, you can see we're in the dense color for the highest vaccination rates with, I think, eight other counties. You can see on the little chart to the right that we've given about 10,500 second doses and 18,000 first doses. So we have 18,400 that are fully immunized and another, I'm sorry, 18,400 that have their initial immunization, 10,500 with their second dose. So we have a total of just under 29,000 persons that have been immunized in the county. So we're approaching 15% vaccination rate. And this is the, the red mark at the top is our aspirational goal of 80% of the population being vaccinated. Next slide, please. So this week, we did receive 1,200 first dose vaccines, 900 of which were allocated for adults 80 years and older, and the other was to complete any remaining persons that presented in Phase 1A or Phase 1B. So it's healthcare workers and educators. The vaccine allocation remains on a week-to-week basis through the Oregon Health Authority. And if you want to stay up to date, the www.shutes.org/covid19vaccine is a good place to look.
Dr. Conway?
Yeah.
It's great to, it's great to track how much first dose vaccine we're getting on a week-to-week basis. Can you also give us a sense of the, the second dose kind of commitments that are being fulfilled, like on a week-to-week basis as well?
The second dose commitments are, are just iterations of the, the initial doses, and that's we, we track that, and so does OHA. So there's a, there's a demarcation of, and they're in our allocations, they're listed separately as primary and boost. So there's a separate allocation, and that allocation duplicates the primary from dependent upon which vaccine it is, either three weeks prior for the Pfizer vaccine or four weeks prior from Moderna.
Right. Do you have a, like a ballpark sense off the top of your head? What, how many second doses we, we got last week and this week?
We have a precise number. I don't have it in front of me.
I was speaking with Molly this morning. It's around, it's a couple of thousand. I'm waiting to get the exact number, but they've been scheduled already. So based on the appointments, it's a couple of thousand. That's my understanding.
Well, just to clarify, even last week, where we did not get any new primary doses, the secondary, the second doses or boost doses were honored. So I don't think there's any problem. There is a, there's an issue that falls to counties, which could be sticky. We have to be attentive to because we, when we receive the allocation, it's charted as such, primary or boost. But when we receive the vaccine, there's no separate demarcation. So that's another thing that we have to be vigilant on. But I'm not aware of any, any excursions from that, that policy so far.
Dr. Conway, I'm wondering about the veterans. Mayor Endicott last night said he'd gotten his shots to the VA. Are those numbers at all in the numbers that you're giving us now?
As I mentioned last night, my understanding is that the federal, the federal supply chain of vaccine that goes directly to pharmacies and other federal supply chains, such as Veterans Administration, is not enumerated in the Oregon Health Authority charting that we're, that we're showing, nor in our local vaccine count that I showed. Others, please correct me if that's, if that's no longer current.
But if we have like 14,000 veterans, and what if they're getting their shots to the VA? Wouldn't that be nice to know that, those numbers?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. We've actually asked for that information, and we would like to have it for our dashboard. I'm not aware of our having been supplied with it. Chris, Nathan, do you know?
I don't think we have that information, but we'll follow up and work on that follow-up to your, your earlier request.
And I'll bring, I'll bring it up, the, I'll bring it up in our vaccine allocation meeting, which I have with OHA at 11 o'clock, and see what we can, if we can shake the trees on that. You have the next slide, please. So where vaccines are provided, this week, first dose vaccines are available. We're trying out, if you will, a distributive model for some of the vaccine. So there's been doses allocated to some primary clinics that were willing to handle volume this week. Those are by appointment only, and those clinics will be reaching out to eligible patients that are within their practices. Pending availability, persons who are 80 years older, oh, I'm sorry, 80 years old or older who filled out the vaccine interest form may be scheduled to receive their vaccine at the Shute County Fair and Expo. These are also by appointment only. St. Charles will be calling these individuals directly to schedule. And my understanding is that we may not get through all persons over 80 this week. So if, if you have filled out an interest form and you haven't heard, please try not to be anxious, but certainly feel, feel free to check back. There are also 100 appointments that are scheduled at a special event that will be Lapine Senior Center on Friday, and that, that event is now saturated. No additional appointments available. Next slide, please.
Dr. Conway, could I ask about the logistics of, of that connection with the primary care clinic? So are all the doses of vaccine, like coming to a central point in the Shute County and then being distributed out? Or are they being shipped directly to the clinics? Or how is that working?
I think I understand, but I think it'd be better for Mr. Warner or Sergeant Garabee to respond then.
So I'll, I think I'll take a swing at what I believe the question was. So, so we were allocated the doses. We identified some populations due to this week, really the small number of doses relative to our population this week, and likely could be this case next week. We, we identified that we wanted to reach out to some populations, the community members that may not be as, may not be able to access via the online registration as much. So we, our vaccine team reached out to clinics that have a large number of older adults in their patient profile, and worked with them and determined the amount of vaccine that some of those clinics could take, as well as we worked with the Lapine Senior Center to reach out to community members that may not have good access to either a primary care provider or are able to get vaccinated at the fairgrounds. And then we also hoped to do something similar in Bend, but that did not work out. So we did move some doses to be vaccinated at the fairgrounds. And that's the, the group that is being vaccinated, or that's the group that's being called back based on the vaccine interest form, as well as some individuals that called our COVID hotline and did not have emails. So we took down their name and phone number and are calling those people back as well to schedule. So ultimately, the vaccine this week came to the Shute County, and then we are acting as the distributor to ensure equitable and geographically access as much as possible.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nathan. So the last sort of informational slide about the vaccine and the pointing. As I mentioned before, we're serving individuals 80 years old and older. Those that have access are encouraged to fill out a vaccine interest form, and we will contact you when doses are available. So if you go to vaccine.shutes.org and you fill out that form, then you'll be queued, so that we contact you when vaccine is available, working our way down the queue at each of the age categories. However, if, and thanks for pointing out this question last night, Commissioner Chang. If you need assistance to fill out the form, we're happy to assist with that. And we would call our COVID hotline, which remains at 541-699-5109. And we, this morning, we've attended to make sure that there's adequate elasticity to manage, manage that in a reasonably timely manner. Next slide, please. So this, you all have seen before. This is the categories. So we've completed our push for Phase 1A, which is healthcare workers and many affiliated roles. But there are still individuals that either decided they didn't want the vaccine initially, or something else happened, they were, they were ill, et cetera, that are still coming in. And then we also have largely attended to Phase 1B, Group 1, which is childcare providers, early learning, and K through 12 educators and staff. And we still have some individuals that are still, if you will, trickling in from that. The main group that we're attending to this week, and most likely next week as well, are people that are 80 and older. And the state made those eligible as of this week. We had, we had vaccinated quite a few previously when we had adequate vaccine supply. Next week, individuals 75 and older will be eligible, and we're hopeful that we will get a concomitant increase in our vaccine supply so we can start actually making progress in those that age group as well. But we won't know until, until late in the week. And then after that, Group 4 is people 70 and older that will be eligible basically the last week of February. And then Group 5, which is 65 and older, says the remainder of the elders eligible of starting on March 1st. That, that, that's the end of the, the slide information, man.
Great, thank you very much. I know there's a little bit more. So I have a scheduling situation that I just figured out. So we're, as the chairs, we were invited to a, a monthly meeting with the Regional Solutions Governor's Office, but they snuck in a, once every three months, chairs of the counties meeting with the governor. And I didn't even know that until just now. It popped up on my phone, and it's at 10:30 today. So I mean, I, it's just, I was like, oh, my goodness, I didn't even see how that happened. Because we had negotiated the fact that it would be Thursday afternoons in this regular meeting. But the, you know, as I accepted those other ones, I must have accepted this one too, and I didn't see it. So I do apologize.
We won't have my feelings if we're preempted.
Yeah, well, so this is just as the chairs, it looks like it's the 36 county chairs plus the governor herself. So I kind of feel obligated to go. So I'm going to step away. We can proceed with the agenda. Vice Chair Chang, this is your opportunity to run the meeting. Commissioner Dare, help him along if needed.
Okay.
So, and I, in the moment I have, I want to thank, and I don't know if this is your next item from the House, but thank Nathan Garabee for his professionalism and leadership in creating an incident command system through this time. It has been, you know, so this is a moment in time. You know, we're stepping backwards in these levels, but also, you know, we've got to step in for the long haul. So I, and we talked about this yesterday with Chris Wyler, Nahad, and Dr. George. I was able to communicate a little bit. So it's a special thanks to Nathan, and then welcoming to Chris. So I think if you're going to be talking about that, I am so sorry. I'm going to step away. And Commissioner Chang, please take the meeting.
Oh, I would just like to say something that, okay, we've done 100 doses at, at Lapine. Please, can you set up something for Sisters? I know we've got St. Charles here, and we've got the fair in Redmond, but Sisters definitely, I believe that my pharmacist said there were over 30 people that were over 90, that were people that normally used her for vaccinations and things. So the sooner we can do something in Sisters, that would be so appreciated. I know that they, you know, there's a lot of people in the community that really want to put that together. And if you give them just a little bit of notice, I'm sure they could use all 100 doses or whatever it would be that you could send there. So, thank you, Nahad. Where's your smile? You need to see your smile. People are so relieved that we're going the right way.
So, well, Commissioner, thanks for that suggestion, and we will, we will include that in our planning. So as Commissioner DeBowen mentioned, the next thing that we're going to talk about is this important transition in our incident command system. And I, I do want to recognize outgoing Incident Commander Garabee for being extremely attentive and having a great deal of insight into how to navigate this very, very complicated system, and for his composure during some very sort of chaotic and unpredictable weeks, particularly around the vaccine supply. And I really appreciate that for having a calm head in the room when the rest of us were really sort of wondering how the heck we were going to get through this. So I do want to thank you publicly for all that, all that work, Nathan. I'm glad that you're going to be still available in your emergency response role and, and continue, I hope, to advise, advise our new incident commander. Our new incident commander would be Chris Wyler, who many of you know from his senior role with our department. And I'm going to turn it over to them.
So last week, it's my understanding, Commissioner Chang had inquired about the Incident Command team. And so I want to tee this up before I have Nathan speak. I want to bring a little context to how we even got here. Public health has an Advancement and Protections Program. So normally, we're familiar with addressing infectious disease, just in routine business. But with COVID-19, the numbers of positive cases really started to impact that program, the ability for that program to actually keep up with the number of cases. And so public health basically brought in a bunch of resources internally to try to help that program meet and scale up to meet the challenges that they were facing. And in very short order, instead of it being a public health response, it turned into a health services response where we organized ourselves under the leadership of, of, under an incident command model, using basically a best practice. It's, it's called the National Incident Management System. It's an incident command model that allows for flexibility. As the size of the event scales up, we can, we can safely respond to the incident. scales up, we can, we can safely respond to the incident in a way that is proportional. Well, COVID overran really the resources of the Health Services Department. And where Nathan Garabee came in is Dr. Conway worked with our sheriff, who then worked with Nathan Garabee to bring in a professional to help expand the Incident Command Model that we were using to bring more of a unified, community-wide effort to help respond to this incident. So that's where we are today. We have a model in place that is working quite well, and we have some plans for the future, which I'll let Nathan talk about.
Yeah, thank, thanks Chris for that tee up. I, first of all, I'd just like to say that I'm just thankful that the sheriff's office and our team and as well as a number of community partners have been able to assist Health Services in the last few months. I think it's, I think everyone realized that it's in the community's best interest that this is a community response, a community effort, and, and we're happy and proud to, to be able to lift where we can and, and help Health Services through this critical time and to do a critical job. I would just like to highlight the fact that, and thank you for the, the kind words, but I think the reality of it is, is that this is a team and that we have a phenomenal team and, and a significant amount of dedicated individuals throughout the county government as well as our, our community partners. So that's what made this successful. I think moving forward, one of the things that we identified is, and this is why we brought in several partners from outside Health Services through other departments at the county, through fire agencies, through community partners in December to add bandwidth and depth to the incident management organization that Health Services needed at the time. And the reality of it is, is, you know, all these agencies, you know, they're doing this by and large on top of their normal responsibilities and duties. And I think over the last about three months or going on three months, one of the things that we identified is that Health Services, particularly on the public health side, does have limited management staff and working to, to fill some vacancies. But the reality of it is, because there's so many important jobs that need to continue to do outside of COVID, you know, recognizing that right now within the, the health realm that COVID is the, the disaster that we are dealing with, and that is the priority for, for the county, but that there is some additional depth needed. And it's not realistic to expect county or community partners to sustain some of these roles long-term and really Health Services laps, lacks the, the personnel capacity to fill some of these long-term. So we are, likely will be coming back, or Health Services likely will be coming back with some potential needs associated with personnel position or staffing positions that would be very helpful and frankly, critical to continue what we've started. With Chris taking this role beginning next week, I think we're doing that, recognizing that, that every time one of our personnel takes this job, that there's a big giant hole left back in their day job. And so Chris will be a transitional Incident Commander. Hopefully, we can look for a long-term model, we'll, we'll try to be as efficient, streamlined as possible as we kind of make some advice on how to staff this. But I think likely it would, the recommendation may include some limited duration or a commensurate type positions to support the, you know, next six to nine months of COVID response. I think with the case numbers going down, we're all very optimistic, but the real, we also recognize that there's still a lot of work to do that, you know, with some variables that are outside of our control, case numbers could go back up. We do have a lot of work to do to continue the vaccine distribution, and that is important to our community and really identifying some longer-term consistent positions to support that and then allow existing Health Services staff to backfill and to support would probably be the most feasible and economic frankly, way to, to ensure that we have an effective response and that we don't completely erode all of the other services.
Thank you for, thank you for giving us a, a picture of what the, the Incident Command Team is, is, is working with right now and the kind of mid to near term, you know, mid to, you know, short to, short to midterm outlook. And, and Nathan, I also wanted to, to say thank you for your leadership of the Incident Management Team in these, you know, in this, in this last period. And I'm really glad to hear that you'll continue to, to play some kind of advisory or advisory role or be involved so that, you know, that, that, that team can, you know, get the benefit of your expertise in managing emergencies.
And Nathan, I just wanted to say what a great job you did cleaning the snow when we got there for our tour that morning. I mean, everyone just was stepping up, as you said, it's an amazing group of people. They were shoveling snow. I mean, because there was a lot of snow to shovel. And I'm only hoping that this year, 2021, you can do something wonderful with your wife. I think, isn't her birthday in August or something? And hopefully, we'll have a quiet time then and, you know, 2020 will be just in the, in the distance. But no, you've been, you've been outstanding. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for getting all those millions of masks and things that we, you know, kept stockpiling. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you Commissioners, and you have a great memory Commissioner Dare.
Hey, I always remember people's birthdays, it's very important, so.
That's, that's a good, good thing to remember, thank you.
I, I wanted to ask, so the, these, these limited duration positions, six to nine month positions that, that we're talking about, when will be, when will we be hearing about that or seeing, you know, specific requests?
As Commissioner, we appreciate your interest and that you've expressed it before. We wanted to open the topic now, we're preparing a proposal and hope to have a staff report in with a formal request for, to present at the meeting next week with your, with your support.
Great. And I know that we've talked a little bit about how there are certain skillsets that are really high demand across the nation and if not globally right now, making it potentially challenging to fill, to fill positions. Are, are these kind of, you know, managerial surge capacity positions that we're talking about, are, are these of a nature that you're, you feel a little bit more confident that there, there are people out there that are, you know, not currently tapped for, for this kind of role that, that might be available?
I think the only answer to that will be empirical. We have struggled to hire people during this, but we have brought people to get aboard. For example, we have excellent new leader coming, coming aboard for our Protections Group in Public Health. So it, it is more work. So the, the only way we can find out is by trying.
Great, thank you for, for that answer. Well, I, I personally will say that I'm really excited to, to, to learn from you all what, what, what you think we, you need to keep the Incident Command Team functioning, you know, at, at, at top level, because this is a very critical moment in response to COVID. You know, we, we have all this hope right now with vaccine coming and dropping from extreme to high level, but it's, you know, as you all know, this is definitely not a time to sit back and coast either. There's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of vaccine to be administered, there's a lot of, or, or people who need vaccinations, and there's a lot of reminding our community to, to be vigilant and to, to not be too COVID fatigued just yet and, and to, to keep up all of the work that they're, they're doing to help us contain this virus, at least for, yeah, six months, nine months, 12 months, or, you know, however long that takes. So, so thank you for thinking about, thinking about your, your structure and your capacity and bringing forward to us your, your recommendations on, on what you need to keep, keep doing your work.
So I would say, Commissioner, if I might add, I think our foremost concern now is maintaining continuity and being able to continue to lean forward and do our best to not only maintain but excel at the county and all the different services we're providing during this emergency, during this pandemic. And then we're also doing our best to avoid completely exhausting people to a point where they leave or encounter some performance problems. So we're, what we're, it's always a struggle in these emergencies to maintain the right balance between intensity and, and excess fatigue. So we're trying to build a staff model where we can continue to maintain this. I believe this is, this is still for the long haul. I don't think that we'll be at a point where there's going to be any formal declarations of the pandemic being over probably until at the very earliest in the hot weather, quite possibly in the fall.
Yeah, no, those sustainability concerns are really important and, and I hope, I, I personally would like to see when you make recommendations about some specific limited duration positions that you also make some recommendations to us about what, what needs to be done to, to make this sustainable and viable for the, the broader Health Services Team and how we can ensure that we're taking care of our, 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 our day jobs, our first, you know, the people's primary responsibilities before we, in addition to taking care of these emergency responsibilities that have been thrust upon a lot of people.
I appreciate you saying that. We certainly are accumulating a backlog of some things that we've had to deem as non-critical and defer. So as this goes on, we do need to start or continue to do our best to catch up on that as well.
One other clarification or something I'd like to point out is, we have this planned out to stabilize the structure for the next couple of months. So we're feeling very good about what we're doing in this transition period, there will be no drop off, we're going to be forging ahead. And the, the idea behind ICS is just because things are good today doesn't mean that something can't change in, down the road and we have to be ready for it. But what is really refreshing is to hear that we can come back and talk with you about the long-term vision. And if we can have your support, then that will give us yet another transition point a couple of months down the road. So we're trying to be very thoughtful about this while, while not dropping anything, all the gains that we've, we've had thus far, we're going to maintain those gains and do more with what we have.
I, I do have a question. Has Heather Kreisner's position been filled at this moment in time?
Yes, actually, that's the one I was referring to, the.
Well, that's what I was hoping. Didn't she leave like October 13th, I believe?
Yes, and it took, it took many passes, I'll let Nahad fill you in on all the fine detail on that.
Okay, well, she was a major force and a smile, and, you know, I'm glad that we've finally been able to replace her because I know she's still in Bend and she was a great asset for our county. And definitely, I do not want us to have a situation where people are being exhausted. As I told Molly Wells Darling the other day, Molly, please, please be really careful because, you know, this eight-day-a-week job is going on for months. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention too is, not only would Sisters like a vaccine clinic, but so would the community of Sun River. So those are two smaller communities, and if we can put both of those on the plan, I would appreciate, I would appreciate those.
Nahad, do you want to comment at all on the advancements in Protections? You don't want to make an announcement at this juncture about that?
Yeah, that's fine, thanks. I don't think we need to at this point.
So Commissioner, is there any other question for, for us or?
I'm good.
Commissioner here, I'm, I'm, I think I'm good as well, but just on that, on that last thought, yeah, sustain, from, from Chris Wyler, sustainability is really important. And we are going to see when the immediate public health crisis in our community kind of subsides a little bit, we're going to see a lot of, we're going to see a lot of wreckage from, from COVID in our community. And at the same time, that, that should be a concern of the county, you know, helping our community sort through the wreckage and, and help people recover and, and salvage as, you know, salvage the good things that they can in their lives and their businesses, you know, in, in our community. We should be thinking the same way about our, our staff. So I, you know, I will, I can, I promise to you that I will remember that there will be long-term impacts of responding to this crisis in the, in the Health Services Department and, and we'll want to figure out how to, in, in terms of sustainability, kind of make, make this long-term sustainable and, you know, take care of the department because you have done such an amazing job taking care of all of us during, during this pandemic.
Can I, if I may, Commissioner, that was a very, that was a very important comment you made, and there are a couple of points I'd like to add here. I think one is around understanding the timeline that we're working with. We've been in an emergency phase for the last 11, 10, 11 months. And frankly, from looking at previous pandemics and what's been written about previous pandemics, there are two or three phases that inevitably we're going to go through. Currently, we've been in an emergency phase and most likely will remain in an emergency phase until the remainder of this year. That's most likely, I mean, based on obviously assumption around vaccine supply and what have you, and this variant. But that doesn't mean that this pandemic is over. Frankly, the next phase, which is another 12 months and beyond, is the recovery phase, which is not any less important than the emergency phase, because there will be social, economic, physical, mental impacts and residues of this pandemic that we have to still respond to. We cannot, once the emergency is over, just move on to other things. We have to balance that with the recovery phase and the impact of this pandemic. And I would imagine that somewhere along, maybe 2024 is when we're really going to go back to pre-COVID times, or we're going to be beyond this pandemic in terms of resemblance of normalcy. So although we're going to be in this maybe Incident Command structure and response during the emergency phase, I think it's important for all of us as also the elected officials and leadership to continue to think beyond. And I think linked to that is another point that you kindly raised, which is we should not let this crisis go to waste. We need to continue to invest in our infrastructure, especially Health Services, Behavioral Health, Public Health, and prepare ourselves actually for an inevitable next pandemic, whenever that is. So building resilience in our system, building redundancy, now is the time to think about those investments than maybe when we're facing it again in the future. So thank you for allowing me to share these couple of thoughts.
Actually, I'd, I'd like to add a little too, Commissioner, since you mentioned the wreckage, I think that a tragedy, a tragic dimension epidemic like this has, in our country, has highlighted many very severe weaknesses in our population, our health and our economic systems, with many of the worst outcomes being business on people that don't have advantages. And I think that it's highlighted a lot of inequities, whether somebody was deemed an essential worker and had to go to work without adequate PPE. somebody was deemed an essential worker and had to go to work without adequate PPE, or if they were incarcerated or elderly and in a, in a confined setting. In all those cases, there were, there are systematic failures that we're going to have to address. And I think it's the, the province of, of health and behavioral health actually too, to try to help not only recover, but also to rebuild and to learn from this frankly catastrophe in our country and ensure that we do a better job the next time. Thank you.
One of the things that no one's really talked about are the elderly in our country who have been locked in their rooms and the horrible, horrible dementia that has happened to our most vulnerable by having them locked in their rooms. Thank goodness, I saw my mother deteriorating and my sister finally said, okay, I'm done with this. And she would actually pick her up and take her out to her home. And you can just hear the tone in her voice now. But hearing from people who have parents in homes that they can't see and all those people do is cry now. I mean, this, this really was not the answer. You know, it really wasn't. And, you know, what a horrible way to end your life. But it's like my mother said, it's like solitary confinement. She's in a room, she's in her little apartment and it, you know, it was getting to her seriously. And I know she is one of hundreds of thousands in our country. So yes, you don't, definitely don't want to take another COVID patient and put them in that same room. We saw how that worked out. That was, that was incredibly horrific as far as numbers go, who died in like New York. But, you know, just, there's a whole social act that's happened where more Americans now are on antidepressants. You know what? We need to get people outside walking, hiking, breathing fresh air. But the number of people that really have been impacted by this, you can, you can actually, you can see it every day.
Thanks for those comments, Commissioner Dare. Yeah. Here are, thank you, thank you to everyone for your comments about how we recover from this and how we don't just recover from this, but we also understand the, the inequities, the vulnerabilities in our society that, that we had pre-COVID. And I, I do hope that we can, in the, in the same, in, at the same time that we're recovering from COVID, we can put a little bit of big picture long-term thought into how we, how we come back better than, even better than we were before. So thank you for, to all of you at the Health Services Department within the Incident Management Team for putting a little bit of, putting a little bit of thought into that at the same time that you're responding to this very immediate and urgent need right now. Okay. Commissioner Dare, any other thoughts on, on, on this item, this agenda item?
I know it's gone, it's, it's been a, what is it? It's almost going on a year now, till March 13th. Yeah, we're getting close to, what is it, a whole year? And I know we've definitely, all of us have learned a lot. Definitely appreciate our team, how hard you guys have worked. Really proud of the Vaccination Center. It's been outstanding. And hopefully, we're going to get some more doses. If anyone sends their postcard to the governor and ask her to please reanalyze, please don't punish those that are incredibly efficient. I think it's a great model. And hopefully more people into Deschutes County, those 41,000 people that have signed up will get their shots. I feel like we have a lot of doses that we need. And, you know, the numbers look like doses should start improving, hopefully, especially with Johnson &amp; Johnson if that comes out. So, yeah, I want, just thanking the whole team, thanking Nathan. He's quite amazing. Worked with him on fires and now we've worked on medicine. So Nathan, your expertise has really expanded.
Okay. Well, thank you again to all of you for your, your, your day-to-day work and your big picture, long-term thinking as well. And looking forward to reports next week and the week after. And sprinkled within those, hearing about what we can be doing to, to ensure we have adequate capacity right now, respond and recover in the long term and, and yeah, come back better than, even better than we were before. All right. And well, we'll, we'll see you next week, if not sooner. Thanks. Okay, so our next agenda item is pandemic financial assistance update. Is Greg going to join us for us?
There he is.
I am here. Yep. Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Mund, Deschutes County Finance Department. I just have a brief update today, but I want to let you know what's going on with funding for FEMA funding for the Vaccine Center. So I told you last week that they, FEMA will fund 100% of those costs for the Vaccination Center. And just a couple of quick updates. So they'll be doing the reimbursements in phases and they call, FEMA calls them projects. So the first project window is 90 days from January 21st. So it takes us about to April 21st, somewhere in there, depending on how the months fall. We have submitted our reimbursement application shell, so that's in place. And we are working on, as I speak, we're working on an estimate for, to submit as part of that application shell. That's really the last piece they need. They will pre-fund us 50% of that ask and will receive those funds within 30 days. Of course, once the period, time period is over, we'll need to go back and true that up and provide the documentation that's required. But at least us, at least it gets us some funding upfront to help us with those costs. The, there, the funds were, Commissioner Dare, I think you might have alluded to this a little bit earlier, but the funds were, are being distributed based on a population, pro-rata population count. And what that means for Deschutes County, the county as a whole, not just the county government, but county as a whole, is that there's $18 million set aside for this 90-day timeframe. So there'll be other asks against that. We're one of them. St. Charles will be one of them. And there'll be other nonprofits asking for that as well to help with vaccination. And speaking of St. Charles, we've been in discussion with them about whether it makes sense to work together on this or not, moving forward to reimbursement. And the way the FEMA process is set up, it makes most sense for us to work independently. So they'll be working on their reimbursement process with FEMA separately from ours. Any questions on that? Just a short update.
So Greg, are you saying that we could actually get funding, we submit by April 21st? Is that what the story is?
No, we have some of the other folks on the Incident Management Team, Chris Wyler, Nathan, and a couple of Jeff Hines and Molly, and maybe a couple of Cheryl Smallman. We're collaborating on pulling an estimate together for what it's going to cost to operate that center for 90 days.
Oh, okay.
Then that number goes into FEMA and FEMA will reimburse us or pre-fund us, I should say, not reimburse us, pre-fund us.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent of that estimate amount. And the turnaround time, I'm being told by FEMA, is 30 days. So, you know, you might recall in past conversations about FEMA reimbursements that they could take a couple of years to actually process. So they're really trying to fast-track this and get money out on the street.
That's great. Let's, let's hope it happens.
Yeah, yeah. And the fellow I'm working with at FEMA has been real responsive. So I'm, I'm real pleased with the process. But just a quick update on that.
Greg and Tom, can I ask, so knowing that these funds are available now, does this, does this change anything about the way that we have, we've been trying to staff up or build up the Vaccination Clinic? I mean, does, knowing that FEMA's got our back on this, does this allow us to, to do more or kind of organize differently to, to have the Vaccination Clinic?
Commissioner, I would say that's, that might be a better question for Chris or Nathan in terms of the logistics there. But my sense is everything's kind of hinging on supply coming in at this point. So I'm not sure that, in fact, we've sort of shut off the tap with respect to volunteers currently because we don't have work for them to do. So obviously, we're capable of keeping up with 1,200 doses a week in terms of our Vaccination Clinic. But assuming at some point that, that supply increase is coming to us, especially as we head towards, you know, the general population where we expect, you know, needles will be flying, so to speak, assuming that there's supply to, to do it, it may change at that point. And I would expect that it, that having that pre-funding would be, would be very handy in terms of anticipating capacity and being able to, you know, fully meet the demand at that point in the future.
Greg, I, I'd also just love to ask, you know, on, on other, on other items from, or, or on the, the December COVID relief bill, still, still no information on, on how funds will get to the state and then come to the county from that, from that package?
No, I don't have an update on that.
Commissioner Dare, do you have any other questions on?
Well, you know, Greg, today we signed a letter where we were actually asking those funds to come to us directly. AOC has really, they saw what happened with the, you know, funding last year and how we had to be reimbursed. So hopefully that will happen and we will get, if, we will get our proportional share per our population. So.
Yeah. So my antenna is up, or are, are up on this funding issue. And so I'm sort of scouring for updates almost on a daily basis. And we'll be back, well, I'll let you know whatever I end up finding out.
Great. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Have a good day. All right. So Commissioner DeBoeck asked that we keep going and try to, try to wait for item 15 on the agenda for his return. But we can, I guess we can do item 14 now and then if there's still more time. Tom, I don't know if there are any more of those kind of other items that, that might fit in around the edges. But should, is it, any, any reason not to go to item 14 right now?
No, I think it looks like Tom's ready. Tom Kuhn's ready to do that one. We don't, I don't have any other, other items. We do have two executive sessions, but I'm guessing that Commissioner DeBoeck might want to.
We'd like to have him for those as well.
Well, I've already notified Kathleen that item number 15 has been pushed to the afternoon, likely two or three-ish.
Okay. Well, Tom, we've got lots of time then, between now and, now and noon to, to work through the Pacific Source Letter of Agreement.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager for Deschutes County Health Services Public Health. And actually, this should be a fairly short agenda item. So we recently were given a letter of agreement from Pacific Source Community Solutions for our Diabetes Prevention Funding. And actually, I was with the Commissioners on October 13th to request that we received the funding, which is an amount of $168,000 to implement our Diabetes Prevention Program. And this funding is for fiscal year '22, starting on July 1st this year. So it's really great that we have a full funding amount set aside, ready to go to, for fiscal year '22. So that program is covered. In the past, this funding was given to us by the Central Oregon Health Council Regional Health Improvement Plan funding. However, we ran out of kind of our time limit to be funded by that funding, but we were able to engage Pacific Source Community Solutions in late summer and they were generous enough to award us this funding to continue the program going into the next fiscal year. So we're very grateful for that. This letter of agreement is simply a legal document with various terms, scope of our funding, what the funding amounts are, other legal terms, and then just something about us providing community reporting on progress of the program. And so this is the first time we've had to sign this document for this program because it is the first time they've funded us through this. And Commissioner Chang, I, I know Commissioner Dare's heard about diabetes prevention before, but this is basically a program where you must be considered prediabetic, meaning that it's not a program for people already with diabetes. We, we have another program that is for persons that have already developed it. But this one in particular, the goal is to prevent people from developing diabetes. It's a very long program. It's a year-long program with, that meets about 32 times approximately a year with many sessions in the first four months and then meeting every other week afterwards. And the goal of this program is primarily for the participants lose five to seven percent of their starting weight to work out with them on improving their physical activities and to work on their nutrition and eating habits. And we have them track their physical activities and food records. And we also do weigh-ins with the class. And of course, during COVID, the program made a drastic change in that we went virtual. And so some of our numbers did fall off a little bit, but nonetheless, we did run the program throughout the year. And as of the end of last year, we've had approximately 400 participants and they had an average weight loss of 5.3%. So the program has been doing really well. And one other thing I just wanted to mention is we're, if not the first, one of the first local public health departments in the state of Oregon to ever implement a diabetes prevention program. So that's something we're really proud of. We really started from the ground up with this program to develop it. And yeah, the program's doing really well and it's something we're hoping to continue on into the future. So are there any other questions that I'll try to answer?
So Tom, how many did you end up with for the year? If you were, you started with what, 400, you said?
That was, that was the number we had at the end of last year. But that's not just for the year. That's since the program was started. We've done 400 people in the Central Oregon.
Weren't diabetic people COVID, wasn't that a bit of an issue? Obesity, diabetes, cardiac, cardiac issues that were really more affected by COVID? Didn't we see that?
Yes, that, that's something we expect. I don't think we, we have all the data in yet. But we're really hoping that once we can go back to in-person classes, then we can really work really hard with participants on what might have been some of the effects of the COVID environment. And we do have a couple cohorts going on now at this time. And yes, we're just moving along with virtual and then hopefully we'll transition at some point to in-person again. And then we assume participation will be better.
Well, I just want to say, helping people lose weight during COVID is an accomplishment in and of itself. Because there's a whole, a whole lot of, a whole lot of people who are, whose activity level has declined and, you know, who, who put on the COVID-15 or, or whatever. So it's, it's, it's great to hear that, that, you know, even going virtual, your program has continued to be effective. I was, I was hoping you could explain to me a little bit, Tom, how, how, just a little bit of background information on. Tom, how, how, just a little bit of background information on the Central Oregon Health Council and the CCO and how, how the, the health department, how our Health Services Department interfaces with those bodies and kind of, you know, how, like, how projects like this emerge from that, you know, from that interaction? I, I may not be, you know, I basically, I'd love a little, a little, and I know what these, these are, the backstory is extremely complicated, but a little bit of backstory on what the CCO and the Health Council are trying to do and how these sort of preventive type programs emerge from that?
Yeah, actually, I can answer that. Not, not every little detail because it is very complex, as you alluded to, but primarily, it was to get Central Oregon Health Council involved with what we were doing with this program. As I said, we started it from the ground up. And so when, before we were even doing it, we got a special grant from Oregon Health Authority to engage partners to begin working towards innovative public health interventions. And we came up with the idea of doing a diabetes prevention program because our former director, Jane, was doing this in the state of Montana. And, and they, they really had some success with it. So we got one of our staff members trained in this. And, but like I said, we had Pacific Source members and Central Oregon Health Council members involved at the very beginning. And then we also had staff, including myself, who were involved in the creation of the regional health improvement plans. And, you know, obviously, I put diabetes on the list as something high to prioritize and also as a possible intervention. You know, we worked to put diabetes prevention program as an intervention. And we are lucky enough that the, that the Central Oregon Health Council highly prioritized diabetes prevention work. So that's a high priority for them. And that's what led to our four years of funding we received from them. And diabetes prevention is still a very high priority. So it's, it's just fostering these relationships with the Health Council and the CCO that enable us to be able to get funding like this. So this, this is definitely a very, a big success story that we've had working with them. And, you know, we're constantly trying to engage them in other ways with other programs.
Great. Thanks for that background. My, my one other question is, so if this is a first of its kind type program in the state, then are you, are you hearing from other people already about, you know, wanting to, wanting to learn about, you know, how your program works and, and to export the, the model?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, we, we, when we started this, we did get some support from the state. And the state even around the same time or shortly after hired a staff person that could work with developing these diabetes prevention programs. And we did a great deal of information sharing, like, three, four years ago. I've given countless presentations to other areas about this program and how we got it up and running. And yeah, so, so we're kind of beyond the phase of when the, when the other counties are asking how to do it. And there are now other counties, I don't have the total number, but there are definitely other counties in the state who are now implementing the program as well. And that's something that happens frequently. We were also the first county, one of the first counties to start doing tobacco, electronic referrals to the state tobacco quit line. And I've done countless presentations to other counties and groups about that one as well. So we're pretty proud that our prevention team is, are often the groundbreakers in the state in certain program areas.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And any other questions about this, this item? Or?
I'd just like to say that I couldn't believe all the things I've learned about sugar the last 35 days, 40 days, the fact that there is more sugar in 2% milk than whole milk. And, you know, and there's sugar in like practically everything you eat, you know, especially, you know, little add-ons like ketchup, my favorite ketchup. So yes, to cut out all the sugar that you're consuming is really, it's really important, I believe. And, you know, I would think that this would be significant, Tom. The more people we could funnel to this program, diabetes is an extremely costly, you know, issue for Americans. And, you know, hopefully, your class will be full this year, or full. I mean, can you join it during the year or do you have to join it right at the start of the term? How does it work?
You usually have to join at the start or very close to the start because then you miss a little bit too much if you miss out. But we, we do a lot of advertising to recruit for these cohorts and so forth. So we try to get the word out to try to fill up the classes as much as we can. But there is a class limit as well. It's usually like 15 participants for each class is the maximum because we don't want to dilute the learning experience by having too many people in the class. And that's, that's the standard.
So do you have a class starting like in January and then do you start one again in June? Or how many classes can we do a year?
Well, we try, we try to start at the beginning of the year many times. And that's because around the holidays, if we, you know, have the holidays midway through the program, oftentimes that's, that's when we're not able to get as many people participating. So we, we kind of bookend the December holidays with the program so that we can start off the new year fresh. That's generally what we do. But there are times when we start at, you know, like in September and so forth. So it just really depends on what, what the situation is and what, how many instructors we have available.
Thank you.
Good to take advantage of that New Year's resolution kind of dynamic.
This is-
Exactly.
Commissioner DeBoe, I was able to join about, right after this got started. So has there been a motion yet?
Not yet.
Oh.
I'll make a motion and you can follow through with this agenda item. How's that sound? So I move Chair's signature of document 2021-137, Pacific Source Letter of Agreement.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBoe?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. And I'll hand it right back right now.
Great. Thank you so much. So I do, yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
You might, you might need to get Commissioner Dare to do some PSA's for you about sugar.
Sugar, oh, I, oh, yes. The detox, the 28-day detox. That's what I've been doing.
I think of it as the carbohydrates, you know, pasta, potatoes, rice, you know, I mean, that's where, that's kind of where I learned.
That's not allowed either on the 28.
But I understand that. But I mean, that's where I learned as an adult. I was like, oh, when I have that big pile of pasta, that's what it is.
Simple carbs are buttered in sugar. Love that pasta.
So I do apologize for the dynamic this morning in my schedule. Is Kathleen going to be available?
Yeah.
So we're, yeah, so we were possibly not going to do this item and now we can. I'll provide, before that, I'll provide a few notes. So this was a joint meeting with the chairs around the state, chairs of the county commissions with the governor. And it just snuck on my schedule by accepting a Thursday at 4:00, which is when we were negotiating a monthly meeting with the regional solutions, like I mentioned. So I do apologize. But yeah, there was some good question and answer with the governor directly. Judge Crawford out of Creek County mentioned that they were one below, or one above the numbers this last time to take a step forward and they're having to step up in the categories. And the restaurant person was going to be real upset. There was an interesting comment, Commissioner Minty Morris out of Clamath County and Rick Dyer from Jackson. The idea was that if, once we have more and more vaccines, doesn't the, the advisory levels change because there's more people that are at risk that are going to be vaccinated? And she said, no, not yet. We really do need to focus on, and so this is her guidance to who was on the call. We need to focus on, you know, keeping the case, case numbers low, even though the vaccine, vaccinated population is going to be going up. So there are some other good discussions kind of back and forth about the needs of seniors and how to get people transported, making sure people that aren't in, in technology. And then there was also mention of a senior that has a hard of hearing. So even if somebody calls to confirm an appointment, they couldn't be heard. And the guidance from the governor was very specifically that, yeah, I mean, we need to look out for our family members, neighbors and friends that are elderly that maybe have any issues like that. There may be, I guess there's an announcement about high school athletics coming sometime this afternoon. She mentioned no wrestling very specifically, just being such a person-on-person sport.
Yeah, restaurant. I guess that's why people are going to Idaho and Utah.
Well, and then also, yeah, so Yamhill County, they're, they're a level higher than their, some surrounding counties. So there's that dynamic of, if you want to go out to dinner, you just drive, you know, 30, 40 minutes into some direction to go to the neighboring counties. So we're, you know, just, just the reality of where we're at. So that was some of the interesting discussions. Okay. So with that, we will step to the next item, number 15, county administrator recruitment discussion. Kathleen, thank you. You were probably notified that we might not be doing it before lunch and now we are.
Hello, Commissioners. Kathleen Hinman. Glad to kind of be able to squeeze in here. We can get this done. And then if there's any feedback, we can get to work on it. So through a lot of work and, you know, cooperation with, you know, Whitney and Human Resources and your feedback, we have come up with a updated recruitment flyer, both with content as well as, you know, visually. And there's a couple of, we've worked to incorporate the feedback regarding, that we've received. But there are a couple of pieces to consider kind of as, and I'm going to walk us through those. And then from there, what I would like to discuss is if, you know, we've got approval to move forward either with edits or if we need to bring it back either later today or however we can do that. The goal is to open the recruitment on Monday or Tuesday. So, you know, sneaks up pretty fast here in terms of our, our timeline. So to jump right in, you were provided the updated version and that is inclusive of pretty much everyone's feedback. There's a couple of items that were giving myself and even Whitney's skills some, some struggle. And so we're working with the contractor to kind of just, just work through, you know, putting a word in and not messing up the entire image. So just a little bit of feedback there as we go through. First decision point or area of feedback is that we have two opportunities for a cover. And the first one that I want to talk about is what I'm referring to is the tiles cover. And so that's the one where you see, it says county administrator at the top, and it has kind of a series of tiles which are images of either Deschutes County, the work we do or kind of the area we live, right? And the idea is with this one is that it would kind of present in a lot of images what we do and where we live. So this is option one for a cover. You might recognize it from some of your other documents that you've seen. And then option two is the one on the cover of the current brochure, which is what I'm referring to as kind of one image or natural, one landscape or natural image. So any thoughts or feedback on which way we go? We're probably going to finalize both to have in our toolkit, but feedback in terms of how we go with county administrator?
My first impression is that the first one with the tiles tells more of a story. You know, it shows scenes of so many things that, you know, county government is involved in. And that the second one is more, you know, kind of a draw you in, like, you could, you could live in this beautiful place kind of picture. I, I like both, you know, they both have, they, they both are attractive in different ways. The tiles, I almost feel like it's a little too busy. Like, if it, like a smaller number of tiles might, I'm just concerned if, if someone looks at this and there's this many little, little pictures, they might, that the pictures, each picture might be so small and there might be so many of them that they just kind of gloss over it and flip to the next page without being drawn in, which I think is, the, the goal is to, is to have the, the, the set of pictures draw, real draw someone to into the life of, of Deschutes County. So, so I don't have a, I don't necessarily have a preference just yet, but that's just one thought on the tiles.
I can agree with what he's saying. And I do believe that the other one with the lake scene and the mountain in the background is much more like, oh my gosh, this is so gorgeous. And yes, there's going to be a million things that you're going to be responsible for with all those tiles. But I think you first need to like draw them in, hopefully. They would want, somebody is not going to want to move here unless they do love mountains and lakes and, you know, fishing and boating and canoeing and all those other amazing things that are what we're known for, you know, worldwide. But I, I do love the pictures in, you know, the rest of the pages. You know, we actually have action, people are doing something. They're skiing, they're fishing. I mean, I, I really thought that the pictures that you, and carrying your golf clubs, you selected were excellent. I, I, I don't know, I think the first one, you know, I would go both ways, see what kind of, you know, do you get a different reaction? But I, invitation to apply, I personally feel that's more of a draw. You know, this one, it's just, there's too much going on. You know, maybe you could have that later on somewhere on the, you know, the, you know, like the last page. And yet the last page here is really quite lovely. There's more to explore. Visit us online. So I like that last page, too. There's only four, four pictures. I think that's, it just has a easier feel to it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we absolutely can, you know, go forward with the nature scene. We could also look at removing, you know, one line of the tiles, for instance, on the front cover. But I'm, what I'm hearing or reading from the group is that the one nature scene image is how we'd like to lead in terms of, you know, this, this flyer being, you know, on our website, emailed and put through social media as well as probably hard copy mailed too. Is that, would that be a correct statement? Do I hear some, I hear feedback on that?
So I guess I, now I'm not clear. So this, I think of this as a, the work product of the invitation to apply. And what do, what are you thinking we're going to put on the front of it now?
But there's two different cover options.
Yep, yep. From the discussion.
One.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option one, little bit larger tiles.
Option one could be the tiles or the image with just the nature scene that says invitation to apply. So there's two cover options.
So I like the, I like the tiles, slightly larger. Are you supportive of that, Commissioner? Or?
No, I was trying to say that I really liked, I'd rather look at this. This is like, okay, now, oh my gosh, the first thing is fire. Well, of course, we're known for our fires and I guess you want to let them know that it's a problem here. But yeah, this is way too busy for me, you know, at, at the front of it. I just think this is, okay, think about book covers and-
Relaxing.
Yeah. Well, you want, no, you want it to draw you in. And I just think this draws you in a lot more. If you want to move to the mountains, this is a beautiful picture. And then, okay, this is the job. The tiles are the job.
But I, I would agree with Commissioner Dare, like, that the four tile layout, that, in that one, the pictures are big enough that you actually really, you know, each of those, each of those images, each of those stories, it does, you are sucked into those. So I, I, I mean, I could imagine a, I can imagine a, a front page with just four tiles that, that I liked just as much as this, as this one page.
Yeah, I definitely like the back page. That's a nice one.
So kind of do something like that on the front, too, where it's?
Sure, why not?
Well, and I like, I mean, I think it's valuable to have this snowy highway and the, the smoky skies. I mean, this is the business of Deschutes County. So, you know, the brochure itself, I mean, let's have those possibly somewhere. So the, the smoky skies with the sheriff's office, I don't know that that's a quarter of the front page, though.
Right.
You know, we could use some of those images. I, I agree that I think it's, it's, we have some really great images of the work that we do at the county and what, you know, what we have here. You know, we could work to incorporate some of those images- You know, we could work to incorporate some of those images throughout the rest of the brochure. Some of their stock images used throughout. Also, what we're going to talk about a little later is that we're creating a landing page for this recruitment, which will then link to our jobs page, so that there's a place for folks to come, that will have additional images. We could have a string of images there and really be able to still utilize a lot of that, but maybe just not on the front cover.
Well, and then right inside on the our community page, maybe there's a six, maybe there's six smaller photos there instead of three.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely work on that.
Or, or on the page that, that about Deschutes County Government, you know, even a couple of, you know, pull a couple of these pictures that depict the work of, of the county government and weave those in there. I like that idea of kind of more pictures woven in throughout. You know, as I, as I think about this more, it does, the first page really should, the first picture really should draw people in.
There you go.
That doesn't mean that this one, one-page layout is, you know, is the one, but, you know, if we can put on the front the pictures that'll, that'll, that are inviting, you know, that word invitation is really, I think key. And, you know, beautiful scenery, smiling faces, you know, cultural amenities, you know, those are some of the things that I think of as inviting. And then it is good to have a picture of smoky skies and icy roads. Some, you know, like maybe in the, you know, about the county government section or something like that.
Well, the last brochure, I remember the last brochure, didn't, it just had pictures with no people in it. And I said, oh, my gosh, we've got to have people in it. We've got to, you know, show. I mean, just like the fly fisherman picture is really phenomenal, I think. So, I mean, that's really going to, I would think, draw people. I mean, we're on the bucket list of a lot of people for our fishing, our skiing, and our summer activities, and our golf. So you've really.
I agree. So we'll work to incorporate some of those images throughout the rest of the brochure, so that, that there is that feel of what we do as a county and who we are as a county throughout the brochure and then on the website as well. I think that's a good approach.
See, like Kathleen, on that one page, the county administrator with all those tiles, the two tiles on the very, very right of that page are like teeny, and really, there's one that's really dark with the sky, you know, and it just seems like it's a lot going on.
Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll tell our, I'll, we'll use that feedback, you know, in terms of working with that document. I think sticking with the one image on the front, really drawing folks in, and then using those tiles kind of elsewhere within the publication is probably the better way to go moving forward.
So one other thought, the, on the our community page, the blue box of text, recreational paradise, cultural mecca, so just the words. As I look at that kind of paragraph, I'm thinking I'd kind of like, just vision-wise, if it could be half recreational paradise and half living, working families. You know, instead of, instead of all tourism, I guess, is what I'm seeing here. And, and that was kind of my feedback, and it looks like you got a lot of my thoughts in here, so thank you so much. But, you know, and it's just a vision, you know, so half, half paradise, half get down to business, living wage jobs, mom and dad and the kids kind of stuff. Looks like I have a nod from Commissioner Chang, at least, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you agree, Commissioner?
Yeah, cultural mecca, well, I'm not really sure if I would.
Yeah, so it's a save. So the second half of that could be more of the business, too, just if there's a way to do that.
Oh, there is. And, you know, we'll work with Whitney on getting the, taking that feedback and then translating that into something that I'm sure you will like to see. Okay.
Go ahead.
Real quick, moving through, there's a couple of areas that I just wanted to point out that we are going to make changes, given the feedback that we received that are not included in the brochure right now. And the first one is on page two where it talks about our community, and it's the first paragraph. We have, where we talk about the elevation, there was some feedback that, and what we're going to do is just go ahead and strike the elevation area and just start with, the area enjoys a dry, high-desert climate with cool nights and sunny days. So just wanted to provide that piece of feedback.
We could say two feet of snow in Lapine after tomorrow, too.
That's perfect.
I agree, that's good, because, yeah, average, it definitely goes from high to low, or higher to lower relative to whenever.
What, what you call, average is precipitation, but what about snowfall average? I think ours is thirty-three inches and sisters and eleven inches of rain. So annual precipitation does not have to include snow, too?
Well, they convert snow into water, into, yeah, like.
Water equivalent.
Inches of water.
Well, it might be nice for them to know what our snowfall is.
Well, there could be a statement, you know, sometimes there's heavy snow years, or, you know, something like that. Because that's what I've seen, you know, like every ten years or so, it really hits hard. And then any year it could hit hard also.
Well, that would be a reason to maintain the picture with the cross-country skier and the.
Yeah, yeah.
And the pile of snow, too.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look at that. I think I also like to emphasize our sunny days, too, right? That's kind of one of the, oftentimes when.
You know, a banana belt.
Yeah, you know, they think of the valley, and that's, that's not what we are.
Right.
So we'll, we'll work to incorporate that, or communicate that in that sentence there.
Yeah, what are, is it three hundred sunny days a year or something? Definitely that should be mentioned.
I made a note. Look at that.
That's a great one.
The, let's see, on page three, where we talk about Deschutes County Government, there's a couple of pieces of feedback that, again, we couldn't quite fit in with, we need some help with the contractor here. And so just want to be clear that we're going to add in, there was some preference to maybe rearrange the services the county provides. So we'll move, county provides public health, behavioral health, and public safety, just slightly rearranging that to kind of, you know, we're essentially in a pandemic right now, and public health is front and center. It's also kind of a larger FTE and larger budget. So that feedback was provided, didn't make it into the version you have. And the other pieces on the second paragraph, we'll add, we'll correctly communicate Blackview Ranch Service District as their official name there. So we'll add that piece in. And the, about the position where we get down to that second bullet point, you know, this is, this was crafted from code, but we want to, you know, we can take a little bit of liberty here to appropriately communicate the role of supervision and management of, you know, non-elected department directors, but also recognizing the role of legal counsel. So we're just going to expand that bullet point a little bit to really address or appropriately communicate that there's engagement with the, you know, elected department heads, elected officials in departments, but not necessarily supervision of man, and management, and then also that, the component with legal counsel, that there is no supervision or management of legal counsel. So we'll massage that bullet point to communicate that piece appropriately. And then the last piece that I just wanted to point out, or I guess two pieces here, is that we are going to create this landing page so that we can direct people, we're going to have links to our, we have a benefit brochure that is sort of timely and completing that really goes into a lot more detail about our benefits. We'll put some more of those resources there on that landing page that people can go in turn to learn more about it, and then we'll have direct access to, you know, Human Resources if there's questions about any of it. So that's something new and different that we'll have here. And then the last piece that I wanted to discuss is that we've put in here the salary range, which is on page four, and that's the range that we discussed, you know, previous. Looked at kind of the market peers, followed up with some of those questions that you had about other local leaders and their compensation. So we're still recommending this range of the one seventy to two hundred and thirty annually. And if that seems appropriate, we can, you know, keep that in as a range, recognizing that the reality is that there will likely be an employment contract negotiation for the specific wage and wage structure, and it would be dependent upon qualifications. So any thoughts or comments on that?
Just if we could take the top number down a little bit, but I don't know if that's appropriate. I mean, that, you know, that's.
It's a sixty thousand dollar spread.
Yeah. I mean, I, as I say, I guess we have the full authority to do that. So that's the only thing I would think of as a starting point.
You mean, like down to maybe two twenty instead of two thirty?
Yeah. As I say, I mean, then there's the, the process of HR, and how do we negotiate that? What does the contract look like? But, yeah, it's just that top numbers, that's a big one.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, yeah, so as a starting point, one seventy to two twenty instead, knowing that, you know, if this is a long-term, so my thought, if it's a long-term employee, we're, well, which is the intention. But there'd be like a three- or five-year kind of window that you're, you're seeing as you're negotiating a contract, and then the future can also be renegotiated, too. So it doesn't mean that it's always capped there, it's just the scope of what we're looking at to start with. Great, I'm glad I mentioned something there, too.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I know, I just, I just did a subtraction problem in my head. I was like, wow, that's a huge range. Yeah, that's good. So you read my mind.
We definitely, we definitely want to give a range so that people, you know, people who are, you know, you know, farther advanced in their careers and who bring a wealth of experience will still be interested. But, yeah, even two twenty is still, you know.
And that's plus benefits, is it not? And benefits are on top?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and so when we looked at those comparables, you know, the average, when we looked at the average high end, right, the, the top of the scales for comparable markets, it was about two thirty, you know, two twenty to two thirty was our average high there. And so, you know, that, that's what that range represents. And, and reality is that it's dependent upon qualifications. So someone coming in with maybe a lot of management experience, but not at the, you know, maybe county level or oversight of all county functions, you know, may come in a little bit lower in terms of appropriate compensation. And, but someone coming, you know, laterally from another organization with a lot of that higher-level management experience, you know, may require that higher compensation. So a range is appropriate. Well, those are the, those are the pieces of feedback that I needed from you all. And I guess the question is, do we have the ability with your feedback to go ahead and proceed and create a final and, and move forward? Or does it need to come back either to a business meeting or, you know, do it through one-on-ones or meet individually? Any thoughts on next steps there?
It may be an opportunity to bring it to a board meeting and to say, this is, this is the beginning. It would, would document the moment.
But she said she wanted this to go out Monday, next Monday or Tuesday. So really, could you put in a one-on-one then with us as soon as you implement all these changes?
We, I, I think we can. I'm going to talk to Whitney and the contractor to make sure we can get those, you know, before our one-on-ones. But, you know, if we, we had a tentative date to go live with the recruitment on Monday or Tuesday, if it does need to come back to the board, that would probably just push it to either Thursday, you know, if we were able to get back onto the Wednesday meeting. So.
And I was just thinking, it's more the, the splash of the board saying that recruitment is open. That's all I'm saying. So maybe, maybe it doesn't need to be synced up with when it really gets published on the website. I was just.
Okay, okay.
We could put it on the website, and then we could announce it at the next board meeting to get our splash.
Yeah, so we can do both.
Okay.
So I'm not opposed to having it go live next Tuesday or, you know.
Monday is a holiday, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
It is.
Probably Tuesday.
Yeah, so I do believe Tuesday will be the first day, so, yes.
My staff would probably not be thrilled with me asking that.
Probably not.
So we'll, we'll take that feedback, we'll work on it, I'll probably just circulate it for your review and offer one-on-ones if that's, you know, if you have interest in that. And then we will work towards getting this posted, and I'll bring it back to the Wednesday meeting, next Wednesday meeting, for kind of that official announcement.
That's fine, yes. And we can think of it as two actions. So whenever it's posted, it's posted, and we'll talk about it on Wednesday.
Perfect.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thanks for your feedback.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
So any other item before lunch?
One thing, I do, did receive an application for the CYC under an unemployed position from Ron Osmentson from Redmond. He applied, he's the chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee for Redmond, and he feels like this, he could bring a good cross-section from with what's happened in COVID to, to the group. So I'd like to recommend his appointment to that position.
Yeah, so I, I got that paperwork, and do you know him, and from him, you know, being involved in the Redmond community, but I haven't really reviewed that. Any thoughts on, on appointment at this time or next board meeting? Yeah, so I, I didn't really, so let's acknowledge that there's an application.
No, I, I gotta, I gotta look at it, and I, I don't, I don't see anything that, I, I don't have any concerns about Ron Osmentson filling this role. It was tricky thinking about this, because when we, when we've discussed it at past board meetings, I was thinking, we're looking for the person who's, you know, working on workforce training or, you know, how you get people into jobs, as opposed to, you know, people whose work intersects with people who are unemployed or underemployed. You know, in this case, you know, Ron Osmentson, his, his kind of nexus with the unemployed and underemployed is being concerned about their, their housing status. So I, I just kind of feel like if we, if we, you know, if, if this, if this seat was labeled differently, you know, people, you know, someone who deals with poverty, or, you know, someone who represents people who are living in poverty, we, we might get a whole range of additional people who express interest in it, as opposed to it being labeled unemployed, underemployed, representative, and then, you know, someone who's, you know, has, has a concern about those people, but, you know, is not actually specifically working on, on employment and unemployment.
Well, the interesting fact about Ron is that when the Turnkey Project came up last fall, and I called Mayor Indicott, he told me to call Frank Wiskowski at Redmond. He said, well, I'm not, you know, call, call him, and so I called him, and then about, and I talked to Gwen at Bethlehem Inn. You know, I was like trying to see, is it something, you know, and Bennett's, Gwen had actually said that, you know, Redmond is really the next spot where we should do something, we have something here. So she put her energies in Redmond, but Ron was like the fourth or fifth person that I talked to about this. So he was very concerned and had some excellent ideas. And so, you know, I, when he actually thought about this, I thought, oh, my gosh, yes. What a perfect person, because he's very concerned and actually does things, you know, he follows through. So I was, you know, I thought, oh, my gosh, this could be a good fit.
Right, yeah. And as I, as I said, I have no concerns about, about Ron Osmentson serving in this role. I, I just, I, I, it would be, to the extent that it's, you know, it's not set in the CYC bylaws. If we, you know, maybe we want to rebrand this, this slot in the future so that, to, to make it more open.
So when I was on the board, that was our, our discussion. You know, the nineteen seventy-three charter defines these seats by name. And then it was a discussion about, well, how do we modernize this, and what do we do? And it just kind of bounces around. So, yeah, I mean, maybe your point, and I would support, because I, I have experience with it also, is what's Deschutes County's, you know, we should look at that again and put. put direction to it from our one-county point of view, and see if we can help the organization.
The bylaws were just updated, we just did that, I believe it was last month, and, you know, the good news is, there are three seats that Deschutes County is responsible for, and they're still responsible for. So I thought that was important.
And in the redo of the charter, does it still label this particular seat?
I believe it does.
Underemployed and unemployed?
Yes.
But remember, we could take the time to review it and just put a memo on the record that says, you know, on this date, at looking at this, it might be, you know, we could propose this. So I mean, even if it just goes on the to-do list for the next couple of years, that's fine. So, because I mean, I was there too, we kind of bounced off of it as when I was on the board. Okay, well, so I'm, I'm halfway between either, you know, setting direction to this appointment today or doing it next week, so.
I could go either way also.
Okay, well, let's, let's put it on our, I mean, is that a motion or?
I made a motion. I did make a motion.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, so.
I'll, I'll second.
There we go. So this is official business of appointing a CYC board seat for Ron Admensen. I have to practice that.
Osmondson, so there's a D in it.
Yep.
Osmondson.
And so any other discussion?
This is a, this is a two-year term?
I believe it is.
So call him for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. There we go, so we can, yeah, create the paperwork on that, I guess. Sometimes we put it on our consent agenda for the future, so Katie Brooks was on there today also, so that means we're getting to two seats pretty quick.
Yes, so now we just have, what is it, recreation, tourism, that seat? And hopefully, there'll be some people that will be stepping up.
Good. Okay, so at this time, we'll take our lunch recess till 1:00. Beginning session of the Deschutes County Board of, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. Next item on the agenda, item 16, discussion of request for noise variance for nighttime construction of Tumalo Place. Peter Russell.
Good afternoon, Board. Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. This is a work session to prepare you for your public hearing on a proposed noise variance, which will be next Wednesday, February 17th. The Deschutes County Road Department is constructing a roundabout at the location of Tumalo Road and Tumalo Place, which is just to the west of Deschutes Junction. Tumalo Place essentially functions as a southbound on-off ramp for US 97, and so this noise permit would allow them to do nighttime construction, to take the north leg, which is Tumalo Place, and construct it to intersecting US 97. They're expected to take about three weeks to do this. The noise variance is for a longer timeframe, just because you don't know when weather is going to allow the construction to occur. So typically, when we do noise permits, we have a much longer version of when they'll be applicable. I didn't want you to think that they were going to want nighttime paving from the time you approved the order to like the 30th of June. It's just three weeks that would float around in there. If you'd like to see a map of the project limit, I have one that I can share my screen if the board so desires. We sent out notice to.
Go ahead and share it, yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Hang on, now that I've boasted that I can do that, let me, uh, all right, standby one.
So, and this is preparation, is this going to be a public hearing?
Yeah.
There's a map.
So first, can you all see that?
Yep, I see it, yep.
Okay, so the bright yellow is the Tumalo Place. So yes, it would be, we sent out notice of the public hearing several weeks ago. We also put a published notice in the Ben Bulletin on January 31st. We noticed, based on the center of the intersection of Tumalo Place and Tumalo Road, which is right where my cursor is right now, we went out 1,600 feet in either direction based on federal noise guidelines. So it's a 3,200-foot diameter circle. That's approximately 40 properties, given the size of the properties out there, and so far, I have not received any comments, either written or my telephone ringing regarding the proposed permit to allow nighttime paving and construction.
Great.
Yeah, and so the 17th, I guess it'll be a hearing. If I, if I get anything before the hearing, I'll present it at the hearing, but so far, all's been quiet on the noise permit for nighttime paving and, and construction. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Peter, the 1,600 feet, I guess that's, was that about a quarter of a mile?
Yes.
Is that, do you have, do you have data or information to show you that that's, that's about how far the sound would, will travel from a project like this, or?
So, yes, so what they do, if you look in your packet materials, basically, on page, let's see, it'd be packet material page 32, it face, it begins to discuss the federal requirements, and so you have a decibel decrease for X amount of distance, and so the notice radius is based on what's the noisiest piece of equipment you have to get it down below 50 decibels, which is, you know, human conversation is ballpark about 60. So 60, 65, so that's the data. We use federal specs, they, they do all kinds of studies for construction equipment, how much noise they put out, then you take that using, like I said, your noisiest, and then go out. It also depends if you're on, doing this in an urban environment or more rural, so because we're rural, we have a, you know, a different radius. If we were doing in a paved urban area, the notice radius would be even larger. So yes, there are federal studies, the safer the noise, and then you follow those protocols and processes to get to what your notice radius is.
Thank you. So this is Deschutes County's application to a Deschutes County permit for a Deschutes County project, and we're letting the community under, know that we might be working at night.
Correct.
Any other questions?
No, I'm glad it's not in my neighborhood.
Oh no, it'll be a nice improvement.
Well, it will be an improvement, and I can understand why, why we'd have to do it.
I was able to go out to this job site and see the, the round, the inside round curb being final, finished, hand-finished, and then also the, kind of the S curve, or, you know, the, the slowing down approach curve, curb being put down. So they put the concrete into a, a machine that puts it through a foot, which kind of just pops out the curb as it's going down. So I was able to see that last week, just real quick.
Okay.
Interesting project.
Yeah. The, the reason that the road department and also the Oregon Department of Transportation has shifted more and more to night paving is because, as you can understand, traffic volumes are much higher in the day, and so if you're stopping people in a construction zone, you're going to get much longer queues that can spill back onto the highway, or also, you know, block some county roads, and then people might start trying to freelance their way through the, the area. Also, it's safer in many ways for the construction zone itself, because while you have reduced visibility at night, you've got much lower traffic volumes coming there, we do have lights going on. So I think when we explain it, a few times I have gotten calls from people in the past for other similar county road projects and said, why we pave at night instead of doing, you know, in the daytime, they're, they're fairly understanding of, of the reason. And also, like I pointed out, it's, it's not for that long duration for the time you sign the order until it expires, and I believe the 30th of June. It's just, you know, a three-week window for certain days in there.
Well, and they, yeah, look for the good conditions and just set it up and go, and then it, it kind of happens fast once you, once they're able to just put the asphalt down, too.
Right. Yeah. As you get closer to the time, Peter, will, will you be able to, you know, give people a, a more precise time window when you think this is going to happen?
Yeah, so.
A little bit of an early warning?
That's a, no, that's a great understanding, understanding question. So the noise permit itself that you would issue to the road department, if you desire to do that, they, they do have their, their, you know, requirements there about reaching out ahead of time as you get, as you get closer to the, you know, actual construction date, and bless the road department, has done that anyways. So yeah, we, we don't have people hanging in suspense for the entire time. As it gets closer, there's public outreach, and they'll also coordinate with Whitney probably to get a press release as well, so people will know when it's more likely to be coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a public hearing next week on the matter.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your patience and your questions.
Yep.
Thanks, Peter.
See you then.
Thank you, Peter.
See ya.
Item number 17, consideration of updates to code enforcement policy and procedure manual. We're running right on time here. We'll see if, there's Angie, okay. We may be standing by for Nick Leelak, is he going to lead the show, so. Angie, you could maybe.
Hey, everybody.
Step in, there we go. Yep. So Nick's not with us at this time, do you guys ready to proceed with this? Do you want to just start working through a matrix?
Yeah, we can, we can jump on in, and I'm sure he'll be here shortly.
Okay.
Dan, also Dan Smith is logging on as well, so he should be here momentarily. And if you'd like, I can, I can go ahead and start if we're ready, or we can wait.
Yeah, no, we're ready, board's ready.
Okay, all right, you guys. Good afternoon, I'm Angie Havner with Code Enforcement and Coordinated Services Administrative Manager. Today with me, I have Mr. John Greily, who's Code Enforcement Specialist, and Mr. Nick Leelak will be joining, joining us shortly, along with Dan Smith, who is also coordinated, at Coordinated Services Code Enforcement Specialist. So they should be joining us shortly. We're here today in follow-up to our previous work session that we had a couple weeks ago. This is to evaluate and update our county's code enforcement policy and procedures manual. The purpose of this work session is to review supplemental materials provided in the January work session, and to seek the board's direction on the decision matrices and next step in this review. To begin, I will briefly summarize the public process options, and then staff will briefly summarize each matrix decision points. The board may then decide that to select the public process option prior to reviewing the matrices, or after reviewing the matrices, when you have a better idea of the scope of the next steps in terms of the changes to be made from keeping the program the same with minor amendments to align the code, policy and procedures manual, and the board policy to potential larger changes. John Greily will first provide a high-level overview of Matrix 1, our major program elements, and check in whether the board supports the foundations of the program as it is today, or is interested in considering changes. And based on the discussion of Matrix 1, he will summarize Matrix 2, our alignment amendments to include minor updates in the red line of our 2014 manual. Then Nick Leelak, along with our team, will summarize Matrix 3, our potential program amendments. We are glad to keep this discussion at a high level, but we are also glad to go into as much detail as the board wishes. While developing these matrices, we spent some time reflecting on our Deschutes County Code Enforcement Mission Statement. The mission of code enforcement in Deschutes County is to protect the health and safety of the county's residents and visitors, and the livability of the community by assuring compliance with the county's land use, environmental and construction codes. The county will assure county code compliance, both by encouraging voluntary compliance and by sanctioning code violators who do not comply. With the daily intention of performing our jobs in a respectful and professional manner, and upholding the mission statement for the community that we serve, I thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion, and I value the feedback that you provide us. With that, I will turn the conversation over to Mr. Greily.
So yeah, Nick's joined us in the room now, just letting you know. I'd like to step in just real quick. So big picture is, this is the code enforcement, do we call it a manual or guidebook?
Policy and Procedures Manual.
Policy and Procedures Manual, yeah. And so it's basically a project of community development, so it's not like long-range planning or anything, but it, it is a project of our community development folks, and there's already, you know, just slight edits in here. So really, it's just, what do we, how much, how much of this are we going to touch and how, other big policy decisions that we're going to make here? So just putting it in perspective from our point of view, looking for community input on this also. So with that, yeah, we could get to John and start down the matrix.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, it's good to be with you again on this matter. So regarding the matrices, we put together just some considerations to inform your decision about the program. In Matrix 1, I'm going to dive right into it. Matrix 1 really covers the program and the manual as it exists today. It covers our complaint policy, our compliance policy, our penalty and citation policy, and then there's also, in Matrix 1, carrying forward a policy decision that was made in the last review on restriction of development permits on properties with code violations. In the matrix, or in the Matrix 1, we've put a lot of information in there. We've had an overview of existing procedures, how it looks under today's policies and procedures manual, what other jurisdictions are doing for code enforcement on these items, some staff comments that we have to inform your decision, some pros and cons, as we see it to kind of frame the issue, and then some board options on, you know, on this particular matrix. In other words, on, on Matrix 1, what we're looking to hear is what, what, if the board would like to see some changes in the way that we do code enforcement today, the way that it's laid out in the manual. And my thought on this is, in this really high-level overview, is to turn it back over to you and see how you would like to discuss this information.
Great. So there's kind of the policy topics in, in Matrix 1. We could probably work through as a board to see if there's any kind of direction changes we want to take here, and then, my understanding is this will kind of guide us through the next few steps also in this, in the, the matrix planning. So I'm comfortable with just kind of starting with each one of the underlying items in Matrix 1. Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, it sounds like a.
Yeah.
Good plan.
Okay, yeah, so that's fine, let's just kind of go through, starting at that, you know, the underlying items, so complaint policy and the three bulleted items. So, yeah, is this just guidance kind of by us at this point in time, or, we don't really need to read the matrix? I mean, there's lots of good information, and I've been able to review it, so.
Yeah, it's up to you, I can give a quick overview of the complaint policy.
Well, so, complaint, anonymous complaints, primarily complaint-based program, anonymous complaints, and then the policy of confidentiality, so those three parts and pieces of it. Other, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, we may be going the same direction already, or, I don't know yet. Primarily complaint-based, referring to somebody starting a neighbor, somebody coming by. One of the situations I see is a Realtor. You know, Realtor is trying to take action either on a property in the, the existing property, or the next-door neighbor, or something in view, that, that starts a process sometimes, so I've seen that, just letting you know. And you, you, you know, as staff, I'm sure you, you understand who are the people are calling on these.
Chair Devone, thank you, and I apologize for being a few minutes late, I, I was trying to print the rest of the documents, but the, our famous 208 printer stopped, stopped working there, but I've got what I need here. We, we tried to provide all of the information possible to inform your, your direction on the, on each one of these items, and we can go into, if, if it's helpful, we can describe what the complaint policy means, we can, we can go through these, through these columns, and then summarize the board decisions. We just, we didn't want to go too, too far into the details if the board, if the board really supports the current program as it is, just because this really kind of lays it out. But we're certainly happy to, and, and John is well-prepared, in particular, as he does this day in and day out, to discuss what the complaint policy and these, these primary components mean compared to alternatives, which would be much more of a, of another, of an active, proactive, seeking-out policies, which we're not really familiar with any jurisdiction that does that, but that doesn't mean that it's not for the board's consideration as we implement our program.
Any thoughts?
Well, I'd actually thought we should look at this again, because I had heard from residents in the. because I had heard from residents in the county that they had been complaining about something for like four years. And there's a, you know, there's a really awful residence, you know, right down the street from them, and somebody can't sell their home, and this has gone on for years and years, and it hasn't been actually cleaned up. And don't we ever just actually get the job done? So then, the short-term issue that I thought was significantly impactful to the public safety of the entire neighborhood because it was, it was a one-way-in street, and it was, you know, one of the first houses on that street that looked like it was ready to explode if there was somebody throwing a match out the window. So I just thought, you know what, I know we kept trying to be kind and thoughtful, but like, when does the job ever get done? And when is it safe? And are, you know, are those people in that community that all are personally responsible going to have to look at that, that dump for a year before anything's ever accomplished? So somehow, without being really horrible, you know, customer service is still great, helping someone's hand is fine, but you can't hold somebody's hand for like a year, I don't think. I think something needs to be done. So somewhere in this document where, you know, we actually put a bit of more squeeze on situations that really do, what, you know, four years is a long time to be patient, and public safety, I think, you know, a year is a long time. So how do we tighten up those decisions, the options, you know, carrots and then sticks?
Well, so the complaint policy is the starting of this process. And I do support primarily complaint-driven, no anonymous complaints, and then also information only available after a case is closed. So that's how we do business now. My experience is I've had people call very specifically. Sometimes it just doesn't get resolved timely, quickly, or something might get resolved and then it comes right back again and it starts the process over. I've been very, very confident and pleased over time, you know. I've gotten engaged in a few of these phone calls directly to me, why aren't they doing this? Or I'm hesitant to call because I don't want my neighbor to know it's me. I've offered to, you know, start a code enforcement case. I don't know, I don't think I have any, anything that I've got my name on now or whatever, but I always offer. You know, if somebody's not comfortable, no problem. And so, yeah, I haven't had any problem with this policy as it is currently. Just for this, the starting point, that's the start of the process. So then Commissioner Dare, I think, you know, what you're referring to, kind of the enforcement and the expediency is the next few steps?
Yes. Four years is too long, and depending what it is, a year is too long.
Curious, in this case, did the neighbors, or the, the people you're in contact, they have lodged a complaint with-
Yes.
Code enforcement, and what is, what, what, like, where are things breaking down in the, in the process? That with, with, I mean, so code enforcement has received the complaint, and then they're kind of issuing warnings, and then-
There's always extenuating circumstances. Okay, so let's say there was a, they, they filed a complaint. Okay, so the person that's in trouble, there's a death in the family. So then, our community, you know, our team, code enforcement team is very kind, very thoughtful, and very respectful of something, but then that seems to go on, and they're given amount of time, and yet it doesn't really look like it's getting better. So, you know, that was my experience from July to October. And I do recall the wise words of Dave Doyle was, you can't win by trying to get involved in these, but when it really does look like it's public safety for a huge group of people in that neighborhood, and they, they drive by it every day and they think, isn't that Deschutes County ever going to do something? You know, every day they drive in and out, and they're gonna go like, wow, wow, our county government just doesn't quite seem to respond very rapidly.
Well, as I say, that's the next policy choice.
Right. And again, well, that's, that was really, really probably why I asked that we look at this. It hadn't been looked at since '14, and you know, the number of complaints has gone way up. We've lost a lot of civility. COVID really put people under a lot of pressure.
So then, so as I say, I support the, kind of the three bullet points of the current policy on how you start the process. Because an alternate is looking for that RV on a rural property that has, you know, car tracks up to it and it looks like somebody's living in it, you know, looking for that scenario. Because that's the other thing we'll find out, is that, oh yeah, they've been living there for years, nobody ever says anything about it. And I'm not supportive of that, you know, making sure people understand that could be referred to as a second dwelling, which isn't code, which I've been in that situation, explain to folks. But, you know, I'm, I'm not advocating for us to do that unless it's, you know, health and safety issue, groundwater protection. You know, there's some reasons you might wanna step in. So, yeah, just get, get in clarity.
I could probably jump in here too a little bit about the complaint. As far as, it is helpful currently, the way that it is having a complaint, a party that is complaining, because it does kind of two prongs. It gives us reference and resources to talk to that complaining party, to have communication with them, and similar to what Commissioner Dare was speaking to, we, that allows us to talk to them and tell them how we're progressing, what we're doing, why we're progressing the way that we are. Also, it can give us a public vantage point to go on if they will let us use their property for, so we can see it. If we can't see it from the public road, it's also helpful. And then also allows them to get a, an update on how the case was resolved and brought into compliance. So those are all really benefits of being able to know who the complaining party is. Just, just for your reference with that. And then also, if it's, if there is a wildlife safety, environmental soils hazard, those kind of things, as Chair de Bon was saying, we, we have received complaints from Commissioners. Also, Randy Scheid is the building official, has submitted complaints based on safety issues, ugly blend if there's overflowing septic. So we do work together to create complaints for those type of situations to start an investigation.
Good. You comfortable with that at this time?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would, I would hate for there to be a situation that was, you know, hazardous to safety or something like that, that just because a neighborhood hadn't, hadn't reported it, it wasn't, it wasn't being addressed. But knowing that even, even though our, our system is complaint-based, there's still opportunities for staff to, to address really important issues, that, that's, that sounds good.
So then the next item is compliance. This is, yeah, where Commissioner Dare kind of jumped in.
Yes, that's my-
So, you know, the balance of compliance and enforcement. I know Dave Doyle again once has, has already offered, you know, through legal to really take another step in there. You know, the, the official registered letter from the legal department is different, you know, than, than the code enforcement officer that came on real nice to start and just slowly escalating. So this is kind of that, that other opportunity to add some capacity to it, some official correspondence, and then the court system also. So, yeah, can you help us with the next decisions, making sure we're clear on saying yes or no on here?
Yeah, it looks like, looks like we're talking about the compliance policy right, right now, and the emphasis on voluntary compliance versus more enforcement or penalty-oriented process. And I'm understanding so far that voluntary compliance is a good goal. It does sound like there, you know, we'd like to see these cases move forward in a positive direction sooner. So, you know, following with it, and following with effective enforcement action where there's, where compliance is lingering.
So Commissioner Dare-
Am I correct?
Yeah, I guess my thought process is, you know, we, and I always explain this to folks. You know, you start off confirming the violation, explaining the violation, asking for compliance, notifying that, you know, there, there could be enforcement actions coming, you know. So this is our, our code enforcement officer's at the door, so I'm, I'm thinking this is what happens. Or you could say, here's your timeline, within the next 12 months, we're gonna get this thing resolved one way or another. You know, so starting with the end date instead of the slowly escalating on the front end.
Well, I'm just thinking, in my case, I haven't been there in four months. So it would be interesting if I actually drove by it, and, and, you know, it's been four months. So, but it started last July. It's, you know, it's, you know, it's, just seems like it's gone on a long time. And it was, it was definitely a safety issue to me.
But, you know, that's kind of the concept, is how much-
How many carrots can you give someone?
Yeah, there, yeah.
And Commissioners, and certainly John, I would invite you to jump in here as well, but achieving voluntary compliance in a lot of ways also is much more efficient with resources than aiming for a penalty, because if we're, if we're gonna aim for a penalty, often we may find ourselves before a hearings officer faster with county council and/or the costs of the hearings officer and a bigger, broader team approach as opposed to figuring out how we can collectively achieve compliance, which is, which is our ultimate goal. Commissioner Dare is exactly right. We do have those cases where the property's gone, but is, it's now owned by a bank, and, or we can't find the property owner, or there's an ADA, a legitimate, real ADA claim, or there are those really unique circumstances. And that is really, it, that still takes us a lot of time to continuously coordinate with all the entities involved. And so Commissioner Dare is exactly right. We do have those cases that, that go on. And we will talk more about the nuisance code and some of those issues here in, in just a few minutes. But really, we're just, we're seeking confirmation that we wanna continue with the voluntary compliance to the extent that we can. We certainly have seen an increase in, in cases and situations, unfortunately, where we are in a position where we need to move to a citation, and, and sometimes that is, as we state, board, B O C C decisions and options, that is kind of the stick approach. And sometimes that is what's necessary in order to achieve voluntary compliance, because we can always withdraw the imposed, the proposed penalty if it's, if it's gonna get us there. But, you know, I think one of the other questions for us is, and addressing Commissioner Dare's concern about the time that it takes to resolve the cases, is we've, we've had for, and I'm sure Tom knows this better than I do, but for decades, kind of a year, as we have a benchmark, how many cases can we achieve, can we achieve compliance within a year? And, and maybe that is taking too long. We wanna look at a different, at a different measure. Maybe not in this process, but either in the, in our work plan update, or it could be in this process, but is there another target month to go out there? Because we do, we certainly hear increasing frustration by complaining parties about how long, how long it takes to achieve this. And the only other piece with this voluntary compliance is, we've just now, as, as you're well, well aware of, and we certainly appreciate, we've just been fully staffed now for just a couple of months, really for the first time in, in several years. And so we're able to allocate a lot more resources to resolving those cases. And I, I would just say, John, if you have any other perspectives, I think, you know, you, you've worked in this program for decades and know it so well.
Yeah, I would just add in, we have to, well, you start out the enforcement process with talking about the alleged violation and education on the code. And then the next phase of the process is really getting an understanding of what the owner, the person responsible for the violation faces. What is their ability to correct the violation? What is their willingness to correct the violation? If they're, you know, if we're not gonna work together in voluntary compliance, we're, we're probably thinking about it at the enforcement stage of the process. But one of the things I wanted to put, put out there is we do find circumstances that are faced by the property owner that are gonna require more time. And that's something that staff historically has had some flexibility with. And that, from my perspective, I would say that that's worked out pretty well. I, I think also from a staff perspective, the last thing we'd wanna do is be in front of a judge or a hearings officer with a party that is really trying to bring the property into compliance, but they have some issues that are confronting them. So this really is a balancing act, what we're doing here. I think staff is cognizant about the amount of time that it takes to resolve violations. If we're not fast enough in resolving violations, we all hear it, and I, I know you, you hear it too. So that's the great check on how we're doing. Just, just some thoughts about the complexity of this decision, actually, on timelines for compliance. You know, one thing I, I would also put out there is, our jurisdiction in outlined counties is a little bit different from jurisdictions you might see in, within cities. I, I would imagine, I mean, in, in talking with people that are in code enforcement and do our work in cities, that things happen a lot faster in, in cities. There, it's a different type of situation. And I think what we've been doing over the years has worked pretty well. What I'm, the thing that I'm, we really take to heart from a discussion like this is how important it is to make sure the staff is doing what it can do to resolve these violations, to keep this process moving forward towards resolution in a reasonable amount of time.
You know, if I might jump in, Commissioners, I just share kind of anecdotally. The most recent time that we went to court on a, kind of a messy yard, solid waste-type violation was a couple of years ago, where we finally got into court. That was after about five different attempts, hearings, continuances. The party involved, I think, had two or maybe three different lawyers ultimately. Each time, we got delayed and continued. And then ultimately, the judge concluded that one man's junk is another man's treasure and dismissed the case. So the, just because we file and code enforcement starts working with people, it's not a guarantee that if push comes to shove, we're going to prevail. There's an awful lot of latitude that the person in the black robe is gonna ultimately exercise in determining whether somebody has, has violated a particular code provision. And so it, it, these aren't slam dunks. And certainly drawing by analogy, the one that Commissioner Dare has been referring to versus the one a couple of years ago, I'm not so sure the one you're referring to is, is, I believe, far less on the solid waste, messy yard scale than the one that was dismissed in court two years ago. And John Greeley was the primary code enforcement officer on that. And literally, we came away with the belief that we were, we thought we were being told by the court that, well, you need to go out there with little sticky notes and say what you think is junk and what you think isn't junk, and the court will decide on a item-by-item basis what's junk and what's a treasure. And in this case, because that hadn't been done, the court just generically said, you know, that's that man's treasure, and, and I'm not so sure it's, it's all, you know, that it meets any of your code definitions. And so that's just, you know, an anecdotal backdrop. These are not slam dunk-type cases by any stretch. And I think if we want them to be slam dunk cases, then we need to be much more critical on the front end when we're gonna even determine whether to file a complaint. So I think right now, we file when there's an element of gray, where reasonable minds could differ whether that condition violates a code section or not. And we typically file with the hope that we can get voluntary compliance and, you know, ultimately have a, a good result. If we're gonna fast-track these with the intention of getting this before a fact-finder in a tribunal quickly, if we don't get very, very quick, almost immediate voluntary compliance, then I think we're gonna need to set the bar much, much lower on the cases that we do choose to file on. That's just my observation, and I've been doing code enforcement since 1996. And, and I can tell you, judges don't jump up and, and embrace them warmly, and unless there's things like solid waste. You know, if it gets into the public health hazard, they tend to be a little more receptive. If it's just, boy, that's a real eyesore, you know, why does my neighbor need to do that? The judges are not nearly as receptive, and, and they haven't been for the 25-plus years that I've been doing this. In the county, I agree with John Greeley. I think they're way different in city code enforcement. But, you know, city's a different beast. You got curbs, you got gutters, you got sidewalks, you got smaller lots. You got a lot of reasons why city code enforcement tends to work a lot quicker and, and have more teeth to it. That's my observations. I'm not necessarily, you know, trying to sway any- That's my observations, I'm not necessarily, you know, trying to sway any position one way or the other on, on, on these decisions confronting you, but they can be very challenging.
Well, once again, I do support voluntary compliance, you know, we do have the culture of Deschutes County rural, it's the culture of the state of Oregon, one house per rural lot, we do have a lot of rural lots here, we are in a precarious time with housing, obviously, so, you know, we want to respect people's needs at this point in time, we're seeing it, we're seeing people just live out on the public land, so I, I'm not answering anything here, I just know that these are all big questions of the day, you know, we, I've had calls about a parcel that just ends up being an impromptu RV park, and people just keep coming, and then it has to be broken up, so there's pretty awkward situations out there, but, you know, we've got a good history and culture of what we do in Deschutes County, so I'm supportive of the procedures as they are at this time.
Seeing, seeing, on this particular question, seeing that other jurisdictions are doing basically what we're doing, gives me a little bit of comfort as well, I mean, yeah, how to get people to do what you need them to do or want them to do is really, I mean, that's a very complicated question, and I, I, I would just believe that a lot of other people have thought much harder on this specific question than I have, so.
Well, and this is our county code, you know, the person that lives there, the person next door is, is all living under the same code, so hopefully it's the right code that we all agree upon also, I mean, because, as I say, the state of Oregon puts some pretty hard definitions about what's allowed, and then we implement what we can, you know, personally, I might allow some little bit different things out there, but that's for the state legislature to, to determine. The next item, timelines versus compliance, just to make sure you have some clarity, or timelines for compliance. Discretionary timeline is that, that ramping up opportunity of, you know, we've, we've talked many times on this subject, and the next step is, you know, however that's going to happen, so, as I say, we've got a team that's working together right now, fully staffed, and, you know, I want to keep the culture of what we've been doing there, so this is one, one Commissioner's opinion here, keep the culture of what we're doing, make sure the presence is out there, response to, to new complaints, and, you know, timely updates to existing complaints for the, for that person that calls and says, what happened to that case that we, you know, that was started, that was confirmed to be started a few months ago, so, you know, making sure, if we have that capacity, I'm very comfortable with the system as it is. Any other thoughts?
So Angie, if I did drive out to the, the case that you know what I'm referring to, would I see a change now? It's been four months, I think, November, just, yeah, it's been four months since we, October 9th, I believe, that's when Dan visited, is there, is it, has it improved?
Correct. Commissioner Dare, this is one of those cases that are exactly what you're speaking of, this is the one that is, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes with it, which is frustrating the neighbors, because they may not be seeing all of the work that we're doing. This potentially had an ADA component to it that we were thoughtful of, initially, as you said, they had some deaths in the family, so we gave them time, then he had to repair his structure. This is that fine dance of trying to get towards compliance, we have invested a lot of manpower and hours into this property, homeowner is working with us, not to the extent that the neighbors would like him to be as far as timelines, and so that, that is the hard balance, but he is working towards compliance. Dan and I speak about this case often, I have been out there myself as well, I went out there with Dan, and from the beginning, when we got the case, as far as the solid waste goes, yes, there has been cleanup. Now, in that, when you define the solid waste, there is a lot of things out there that we wouldn't typically deem as solid waste, as far as the pallets that they have that are, he's, he makes furniture and things out of, so you'll see that, also, he has the juniper trees that he makes walking sticks out of, so this is a little bit of a tricky case in that, what do we deem solid waste? And this is an exact circumstance of, of why I love this conversation, and we'll talk later about the solid waste code, how it's defined, what it is, as it's currently written, it can be, it doesn't address some of those things that the neighbors are, are really upset about, and then, so, so to your question, depending on how you're looking at solid waste, it can be, it still looks similar, however, there has been some cleanup, but not to the neighbor's standards, I know that they're not going to be happy about it, and in all honesty, at the end of this, when we close the case for compliance under our current, current code, I don't know that they will be happy about it. But, but all of that to say, I can assure you that we are working on this case, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes efforts going into this, and other cases that come up, up along these, these same components, as far as if there's an ADA situation, if there's finances that hinder cleanup, we have enacted several things over these last years that will help us gain compliance, as far as vouchers with the solid waste, not landfill, we, we've been getting vouchers to assist in cleanup, we have initiated a, a internal voluntary program to help clean up some of these solid waste cases that will use, but this is an exact case, Commissioner, that is a little bit tricky, in that we can get them to compliance, but I think that the neighborhood may not always agree with the compliance that we gather.
Well, it is, it is interesting that, I haven't heard from the neighborhood recently, and I'm, you know, it is winter, and maybe some of them are, you know, down south or whatever, but, I, I mean, I thought you guys had such a lovely attitude, I knew how hard you were working, you know, we had that meeting with Dan and you and I, and I just, you know, I kind of just think of it, oh my gosh, what if I was one of those neighbors, and, you know, it would be really frustrating.
This is a very excellent example of standards of living, partially, it's, it's not a hazard, but the owner's standard of living or opinion of, of things that interest them, that are beautiful, that they, they love, differing from the neighbor's standard of living, so this is a very, this is what we, what we go through on these cases that make, it's not always black and white, and we have, and John could probably speak to this too, but as long as they're working towards compliance, we don't usually hardline them, because it's either circumstances with physical ability, or finances, or, or to name a few, and as long as they are willingly working towards something, we give them time to do that, with always the goal of efficient compliance as much as we can, but the hard part is often is that there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes, we do try to communicate that to the complainants, so they can understand that the best, best of their ability, but at the end of the day, I do understand the frustration on, on both, both parties.
So you have actually reached out in the last four months, then, to those parties and let them know?
I, I did, I talked to them, it has been last, winter was prior to Christmas, so I'm not exact, I can't recall exactly when, but I have spoken with them, and then, and I'm glad to provide an update as well currently. We have been working on this case, Dan and I met as recently as two days ago on this case, so try to see the, the way that we can get a path forward. With that, again, a lot of the things outside that the neighbors are deeming as solid waste, we wouldn't typically address. Dan is meeting with, conducting a list right now, we're going to go out on site and give them an itemized list of what currently falls in our solid, solid waste code, and really nail that down for them, but again, a lot of what you see is, is not going to be included in that list.
Oh, thank you for that update, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, we're kind of, we're kind of way through the list here a little bit, so next policy issue, penalty.
Of course, it would be the one that I would drive out to, right?
Oh, yeah, no, well...
Of course. Well, the neighbors were very, you know, they were really not happy, so.
Next item, penalty and fines policy. So John, could you explain, yeah, when, when does that come in, you know, as I say, if it's an escalating case, when does that conversation start with a person that, that needs to be had, yeah?
Yeah, so, in the early stages, we're establishing timelines, you know, and typically, 30-day reviews are pretty, they're pretty much the mantra in code enforcement cases, 30-day periods, we'd like to revisit this in the 30-day period, and we're making sure that there's continual progress and reasonable progress within that time. Now, the early stages are that feel-out period, is there a possibility for cooperative voluntary compliance? Where there isn't, or if compliance is really lacking, then we're considering the next phase, an actual enforcement phase of code enforcement. We'll start that process out with a warning, and that's not what's on here as far as penalties and fines, but that's the initial step, to see if a warning can move this thing in the right direction. The next step from there is to go ahead and issue either a notice of violation and propose civil penalty, and that goes before a code enforcement hearings officer, or to issue a uniform citation in circuit court. The fines for Class A code violations, which are most of our violations, can be up to $2,000, so that is the base level on most of these. Building code violations, it's a lesser fine of $1,000. What we use that citation phase of code enforcement for is really still a tool for compliance, these are alleged violations until we bring it to a venue like this, and in that, in that venue, we, the county presents its case and requests an order to correct where there is a violation and the imposition of a fine. So, and, and then, if we go through that process, that's where we ultimately end up, there's an order to correct within a timeframe requested by the county, and then if that does not happen, then the county can come back in to, we can come back in before a code enforcement hearings officer to seek fine for continuing violations, and the code specifies that that can be up to $500, and that could be a per-day penalty. So, the purpose of this, this policy item is to express, this is the way we use this tool of enforcement, and to see if the board has some preference on doing something different. One of the things that we've indicated as a board option here is perhaps that there's possibility that fines can be based on, the fine that we perceive can be based on the severity of the violation, and that may prompt a sooner violation. Other than that, you know, I, I don't know that there's really a decision item here as, as, other than, and then this kind of bleeds back into timelines for compliance and discretionary versus defined lines, and when do you move to citation?
Well, so my conclusion once again, existing approach seems to be working, and, you know, I mean, and as I say, if this comes up in a review and, and the doc, document, and there's a slight word change or a slight policy variance, you know, we could still, we could still have that discussion as this process happens, you know, closing up for the next version of this manual. And my thought is, we're, we're working our way through the matrix, so we can understand, are we putting some big directional changes to this or not, and, you know, that's what we're doing at this point in time, so, any other thoughts, Commissioners?
I have a question, how many times do we actually fine someone and we forgive the fines? Do we have that reputation out in the public? I mean, does it happen like 50% of the time? They finally do say, okay, we'll get everything done, and we'll say, okay, we'll forgive your fines, do we do that?
We do that, and, yeah, John, I'm sure you have a good perspective on that.
Yeah, so, in recent years...
I mean, that's really what we want.
Tried that in traffic court one time, and it didn't work for me.
Come on, John.
Oh, the, what, what we've been doing, we've moved most of our citations in before a code enforcement hearings officer, and there's multiple reasons for that, but one of the things that we're doing today in those, in those cases, is we're requesting the imposition of a fine, and the fine, like I say, could be up to $2,000. What we're oftentimes requesting, more times than not, is that there, the full amount of the fine be imposed, but there's an offer to stay a portion of the penalty, oftentimes, up to $1,500, is an incentive for property owners to take that corrective action within reasonable time, and that reasonable time is oftentimes within 60 days, that actually is the appeal period for one of these types of decisions. So, we propose that full correction within the 60-day timeframe, there's a cost recovery amount of $500 that the county would like to see paid, but if the property is brought into full compliance, the remaining fine is vacated. And in answer to your question, it, it's, it's very rare in today's day and age that the county requests that the fines not be imposed, that there be no fine, and, and the guidance for this is really the Procedures Manual, which suggests that we should be seeking cost recovery, at the very least for this level of code enforcement.
And Chair DeBonne, so part of that cost recovery is really, usually is to pay our hearings officer costs, which is a direct cost that Community Development Department pays our hearings officers, and that's what's most important for us, because that's, that's a direct cost, and, whereas, of course, staff costs are already absorbed within our budget, but idea, if, if that can be included as well, terrific, but generally, it's, it's the hearings officer costs.
So a hearings officer, is the work product a decision, just like we see our land use decisions, you know, this address in this condition, this code violation, maybe photos associated, I mean, so, I'm thinking, so, does the property owner receive that report? I guess is my thought process.
Yes, and John, do you want to elaborate on that? It's, it's an order to correct generally, is that, what is the product that the hearings officer is providing?
So the hearings, hearings officer's order is an order to correct, and then they, typically, the hearings officer's requesting, what is the cost recovery amount here? Does that answer your question?
Well, so the order to, so I'm just thinking, if I was a homeowner, and I didn't understand that my treasures in my front yard were, were the thing that, that brought you to, from my front door, what do I receive from the hearings officer? You know, is it, is it a document that explains this is the code, I mean, I got to imagine this, but I haven't seen it, this is the code, this is why this doesn't fit the code, and then you're saying it's an order, saying, remove these items from your front yard, we'll cure this code enforcement case. As I say, I haven't seen one, but I bet that's what it is.
Essentially so, it, it really is a summary of the hearing on the alleged violation, the county's producing evidence, and the hearings officer's either making a fine in a violation or indicating that there's no violation here, but confirming that by the preponderance of evidence provided by the county, these materials, if we're talking about solid waste, would constitute a violation of the county's solid waste code, and then following as far as the order, with an order that the property owner bring the property into compliance to the reasonable satisfaction of Deschutes County, so there's a follow-up action item for us in the end, to coordinate with the property owner, do a site visit and verify, yes, there is reasonable compliance to the satisfaction of the county.
Great.
To further elaborate on that, sorry, we also send out discovery packets and other information, so they, the property owner generally will have photographs of exactly what we're considering to be solid waste, and those photographs are referenced in the, in the hearings officer decision, as exhibit, you know, E or what, what have you, so they can compare it directly to know what we're talking about.
And I'd like to tag team on that, Dan brings up a good point there, so in the early stages of code enforcement, there's always a site visit that happens to discuss the alleged violation, and more times than not, we're following up from that very first site visit with a summary of the site visit, a summary of the discussion that we have on site, and if we're talking about solid waste, we oftentimes are going over areas of the, the property, shooting photos of the materials that appear to be a violation under the code. property, shooting photos of the materials that appear to be a violation under the code, and giving them information that this is what compliance would look like if you addressed these areas of the property. So, there, you know, I just thought it important to let you know, in the early stage, we have that communication on what, what the county views as the issue, with an eye to what the code says. And this is happening long before we even move to issuance of a notice of violation and a proposed civil penalty in front of the hearings officer.
So, the definition of what a violation is, and the proposed cure, is pretty clear before a hearings officer order. That just makes it a lot more official, tracing it back to the code and, and order form. Good. Well, good to understand that. So, the last item, restrictions on development permits. A little bit of history here, I was involved with the 2014 discussion. You know, would there be any proposed changes or not? So, it looks like other jurisdictions, many jurisdictions have implemented this policy. So, I don't know. My question there is, is this, has that happened in the last half a dozen years? I mean, I don't know if people follow the industry, is this, was this not a standard, now it is more of a standard?
Yes, correct. Chair DeBonne, I was just, I keep looking at the screen to see if John wants to jump in, or I can jump in. And, and this was an outcome of the 2014 update, and this was, the board asked us to consider this. We did. We created a small committee of people on various sides of code enforcement issues, and we looked at, including one of our hearings officers. We looked at other examples. Multnomah County's was, was one of the best examples that we had. And it was through that process that we then adopted that into, into Deschutes County Code, those provisions. And we have not, one of, one of the pieces here, which we'll get to in just a moment on Matrix Two, is, we have not yet then reflected that in our code enforcement policy and procedures manual. But we really want to check in with the board, is to see if you would like to continue this. And I can confirm that, yes, we do have this situation come up, where somebody has applied for something, and we're not able to proceed with issuing the development permit unless the application is to correct the violation. And John, Dan, Angie are frequently involved. I shouldn't say frequently, we don't have that many cases here, but they'll be able to provide more information on just how many cases we have that, that they've been involved in.
Yeah, I'll tag on to that. I, actually, in, in some total, since that provision came to the code, I don't think there's been even 10 that have come up, but, but there have been some. One of the important things in this, and I think it's, not everybody understands this, is that in order for this to affect development on a property, it must be an adjudicated violation. So, the county needs to have issued a citation, and had a hearing on it, and there needs to be a finding of violation. The other alternative to that is if there's a voluntary compliance agreement, and that's a formal agreement where a property owner admits that there's a violation on the property. So, in tho, under those parameters, this provision would apply. So, I think that's part of the reason why we haven't seen as many as one might expect, now that that code is in place.
Good. So, yeah, the, yeah, the request is, if we want to retain this policy, remove it. And I'm supportive of retaining it. Subset of development actions, somebody finds this once in a while, but especially in today's world, you know, people want to have a valuable property, and this is just that double-check to say, well, let's make sure we're not having, we're not building the next whatever on the property with a current known violation.
You mean another ADU?
Well, that's it. I've been, you know, I was thinking a pool or a gazebo, but we'll see, yeah.
They're going to be legal pretty soon. We're optimists, aren't we? Yes.
So, it looks like, yeah, that gets us through Matrix One. I know that was kind of educational, good discussion on top of it, but no major policy changes, is what we're seeing there. So, if you want to help us get to the next level...
Yes, I'd be happy to. Okay, so, Matrix Two is the, the minor updates, and is really based on this discussion. We've put, as part of the Matrix Two materials, some red-line edits that staff did on the existing manual, where we took the manual as a whole, and we looked at the way we do business today, since 2014, and we made some red-line changes to the manual, to just bring it up to speed on where we're at today. And a lot of those changes are fairly minor. There, it could be as much as changes in terminology. One of the things we needed to do in this manual update is to bring it up to speed for our dual-option approach to the citation phase of code enforcement. The original manual was really written to these, these citations going into a court of law. Now, most of our citations are going before a code enforcement hearings officer. So, you'll see some red-line edits that we did, that we thought would update the manual to reflect that dual approach to code enforcement. So, really, this was, there were some minor tweaks to this, but I don't know that there's much substantial i, in the red-line edits. It really is to bring it up to speed to today's business. It is reflective of our discussion with regards to Matrix One, keeping all those intact. Nick mentioned that we don't have in the manual the restriction on development permits. That was actually something in the prior manual to 2014, that that would be a goal of the county in 2014. We took that out of the manual, because there was discussion that we're not really able to do that. It's not codified. Now, it's codified. And so, the question becomes, do we want to get that into the manual? Is it appropriate at this point to make that amendment to the manual? And then, one of the Matrix Three items that we're going to be talking about is related to our complaint policy on marijuana. That's just another consideration as far as the red-line edits. But what we thought in putting together the red-line edits, is this is just a baseline on, you know, what kind of tweaks would you make to the manual to reflect current operations?
So, it looks like Matrix Two, first item, talks about allow, or include allowance of anonymous marijuana complaints in the manual. So, that's kind of a yes or no question, or a policy choice. I'm just saying, let's, if we're ready to have that discussion. So, the allowance of anonymous marijuana complaints, and my experience is, this is in place now. It was an important time after Measure 91, and state-defined land use that required approvals on EFU lands. We went through a process of trying to figure out what reasonable regulations are, which filled up this room a few times. With, yeah, so you mentioned PTSD from that, so, I think, but, yeah, I'll let you know. I mean, I'm, I'm supportive and comfortable moving past anonymous complaints for marijuana at this time.
Moving past it, not keeping it?
Not keeping it. Not anonymous complaints, yeah.
Well, who knows what the actual bottom line will be with Measure 110 for our lovely state, but I, I think allowing them to be anonymous is really quite okay. I know we still have a lot of things that are happening in our community that our, our sheriff's code people are picking up. They've made some significant drug busts, not that long ago, maybe a couple of months ago. So, I, I think having them anonymous is really okay. I know someone mentioned it to me one day, and they felt uncomfortable, they were worried, but sure enough, it was, I think, one of the most recent drug busts.
Well, and I've gotten those calls too. In fact, I, I've received a call from the same person about one year apart, and I said, oh, okay, you know, I understand, it smells like skunks out there, was the terminology. And, as I say, it was a year later, and I took the call, handed it off Community Development, and as I say, I got a note back, a text on my phone that said, problem's been taken care of. And then later that night, I heard about a big drug bust. So, I mean, it's out there, but I don't, she never, this person that communicated with me, she, she, I don't think anonymous was anything about it. It was just like, I need to know that, you know, if that's what's going on, that we're, it's either legal or not legal. So, that's not, my experience is anonymous is not the issue of the day anymore.
Well, I know that Representative Lilly Morgan, who was a commissioner with us, now actually has a serious issue in Jackson and Josephine County with the marijuana that's down there, and she has a bill in the legislature, I was just reading about it the other day, what, what they're dealing with. So, it is an issue in our state in spots. So, I, I don't mind leaving it anonymous.
Chair DeBonne?
Yes.
If I may just offer, and John, you might want to share this perspective as well. This was really important, particularly at the beginning of the program, when we just didn't know what was marijuana, what, what was hemp? Was it indoor, was it outdoor? What was it? Were they licensed or not? There was so many questions. And since that initial policy, we have worked so closely with the sheriff's office, with the district attorney's office, et cetera, that when we do get a complaint, generally, our first response is going to mean, is, is to determine, is it a licensed complaint, a licensed facility with medical or recreational programs, either one, regardless of how we get the complaint. We want to see, because if it's, if it's not licensed, or if it's not registered, if it's not legal, we want to turn that over to the, to the sheriff's department and law enforcement immediately. So, it's, it's, whether we, whether the board decides to keep the anonymous complaint process or not, is probably less important now than it previously was, given the, the systems we have in place. And I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but John, I don't know if you have any other perspectives on that, and how we, how we, how we process those complaints today.
So, is it actually possible to find out if it's a medical license? They will let you know now? The state?
They will.
Okay.
Correct.
Hippo log?
Very, very important difference in what we had at the, at the beginning.
Oh, good, because remember, they wouldn't let us know.
Right.
Just for context and reference, commissioners, so you know, we had seven complaints last year that were regarding marijuana, so was .81% of our cases, just for your reference, so you know how many were, were discussing in the last year.
And how many of those were anonymous and versus not anonymous?
I do not have that info, but I can...
Yeah.
Because we, so we were allowing anonymous complaints now, just kind of on an informal basis.
Well, for marijuana cases, it's, I mean, it's been adopted that it can be anonymous. That was a board choice at one point.
It's always formal.
That was allowed in 2016.
And that was very important to Sheriff Nelson at the time as well.
Yeah. Yeah, to get, I mean, if people feel that they're very uncomfortable with what might be going on, we want to hear from you. So, and, I mean, this is not a big, I mean, it could go either way here. I mean, because it's community, community input is what we want. I've had people call me directly, and, yeah, we'll see where it goes.
It just, it just, you know, for the sake of consistency, if we don't, if we don't allow anonymous complaints in, in any other, in any other realm, it just, it seems inconsistent to, to allow them here. And there may be some good reasons for that, but I, I'm not sure if I've heard those yet.
Well, what about, kind of leaving it in the mix for discussion if we have a public hearing on the matter?
There you go.
Is that okay, Commissioner?
Sure.
There we go. So, yeah, it's a topic for input. So, at this time, we can maybe close up on getting through Matrix Three, or whatever we need to do to...
I think so, Commissioner. John, I don't know that we have any other comments on Matrix Two. The other ones, we're just making sure that the, the code, the manual, and board policy are in alignment. That's really the intent of, of Matrix Two, was just to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
John, are we...
Correct.
Good. We're okay to move on to Matrix Three, John?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I don't want to get ahead of you. I'm, I'm here to help, not to, not to hurt. So, commissioners, Matrix Three, we outlined four basic items, and of course, there may be others, if you have, that we were, we really wanted to check in with the board, where it's not just confirming the current program or bringing alignment, but these could be changes to the program, all of which are, are fairly minor. And I'll just summarize them, and then we can go through each one. One is, as we've heard from other jurisdictions, is there an interest in changing the name of the program from the code enforcement program to the code compliance program? And we suggest that, and I really, our team, our code enforcement specialists support that. It's, as they're establishing relationships with people in our community, and their education, the outreach, achieving compliance is really the goal. Enforcement is not the goal. And so, it's just one, we, we offer that for, for consideration. We don't, we wouldn't aim to expend resources or anything of, of that nature on changing business cards, or whatever the cost would be. It's just, as, as time, if, if the board supported that, over time, we would gradually make that change, if necessary. But, so that's, that's one, and we can just, let's get into that more in just a moment. The second one, and this is really going to be John's specialty and our team's specialty, should we consider developing a nuisance abatement ordinance, and provide authority and procedures for nuisance abatement by county action and recovery of such abatement? We'll get into that in just a moment. Should we explore amendments to the solid waste code with respect to nuisance accumulations on private property? And this really gets to the heart of the matter that Angie mentioned, Commissioner Adair, we're both talking about. And we've included, and this is really the solid waste department's code, it's not, it's not our code. We had a great conversation with Tim Shimke, the solid waste director, about this, and one of the first things that, that we noticed is that the code was adopted in 1991. It has not been updated since then. Tim acknowledged that it's one of those things, that, gosh, it should be great to get to at some point, and it hasn't happened in the last three decades, and, and we can talk a bit more about that. Is it time to, to revisit the solid waste code? Just to make sure we're in compliance with, with both state law, as well as the commissioners' directions, and what you would like to see us enforcing. And then, are there, should we change any of the priorities in how we, how we tackle cases, from public health, safety, and some protected, like natural resources, scenic, historic areas? Should we expand the priorities to include others? Because sometimes, we find ourselves in that situation where we have to prioritize cases that have the greatest or the most immediate threat to something, be it public health, life, safety, a wetland, a repairing area, or something of that nature. So, I just want to give you a snapshot of what the four are. So, if, if it's okay, if we go ahead and start, just start with, to see if you have any thoughts at this point on the first one, on just, should we, is it worthwhile to consider changing the name of the program, or we, or continue, continue as is? It's not that we have a strong opinion one way or the other, but...
It's very, it's very positive sounding, compliance specialist, you know? And they'll go like, well, you know, it does, it does sound very positive.
Yeah.
There you go. I'm supportive also.
Now, if, if you could change it even more to reflect essentially what code is supposed to do, code is supposed to like maintain sanitation, and, you know, protect public safety and public health. You know, if you could put all of those things into, into somebody's title, that would be even better, but it would be quite long, wouldn't it?
It would.
Yeah, so, compliance seems, seems like a better word than enforcement to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And so, let's go, we'll go on to the second one. And John, if I can turn this one over to you, because, as well as Angie, Dan, and to our team, to explain this one in a bit more detail.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Nick. Commissioners, this is one that's been on my mind for a couple of years now, and it's, should the county develop an, an actual abatement code? And what we're talking about in an abatement code is a procedure and an authority for the county to come in and correct a violation on a property. And the, the more common, from my perspective, type of violation that we're talking about would be a solid waste violation. And the instance that would may present is in instances where a property owner is taking too long to correct a solid waste violation, or even probably more likely in an instance where the county is getting repeat complaints. We've resolved the violation at a point in time, and the property, four years later, pops up again, and there's another very significant solid waste code violation on the property. Just as for context, we have some properties in Deschutes Counties that we might have visited five years, or five times in 20-year period. And so, there comes a point in time where perhaps what we're doing is not working, at least sending the message that it needs to be corrected, and it needs to be lasting compliance. So, an abatement code, if developed, would be another tool in the code enforcement toolbox, or, you know, options to... or, you know, options to resolve a violation. What we've seen with, talking with other counties, what their abatement code looks like, it's a process typically for reviewing an alleged violation, so the initial hearing on a matter, but also rolling into that, a discussion about the need to abate, to correct the violation on the property. Typically jurisdictions are asking for an order that the property owner abate the violation, and within a specified time, within specified parameters, and if that doesn't happen, for the jurisdiction then to follow up and have the ability to come in and correct the violation. And how this is, how this presents, or the venue that jurisdictions take this to varies. A lot of city jurisdictions take these in the muni court, or something like that. We've seen some of our similar county partners, or jurisdictions, actually do this through administrative hearings process, and then getting an order in that venue, and then coordinating with the court system if a property owner does not abate the violation from that order. So I thought that it was important, and I really appreciate this opportunity to coordinate with the board. This doesn't come up very often, but reflecting over the years, this is one thing that isn't, doesn't exist in our toolbox today, that could be another tool, and an effective tool at that. Obviously, we're in the really early stages of having this discussion. If we did look into this, I think we'd want to explore this in a much more, you know, a complete process involving the legal department, canvassing other counties, and putting together a good idea of what this might look like in the Chutes County.
Well, this kind of puts a bookend on the opportunity, it looks like to me, you know, the fact that this is where it could end up. And then also, I'm just thinking, you know, for Commissioner Adair, if there's truly a, just like we're saying, solid waste is the example, but if there's truly a pretty black and white solid waste scenario, this is where you can say, okay, you know, either or, either you're going to do it, or we're going to do it, you know, I guess is what it boils down to.
Historically rare. John, how many times has that happened? Never because it's not in our toolbox?
Oh, and that's a great question. So this tool is, it's not that this tool isn't in our toolbox. The county's nuisance code provides for the abatement of violations on properties. What we do today is, we get to a stage where we ultimately are circling to the legal department for an injunction, and then, and if there's, well, part of that injunction, we could perhaps request abatement ability, but more likely what would happen, the way it's worked out in the past, is property owners fail to correct the violation from the injunction proceeding, the court ordered to correct the violation, and then we're circling back to circuit court with a request potentially to abate the violation ourselves. So there is a process, you can do this. One of the things about codifying this, this is something you'd want to think about, you don't want to limit your ability to, you know, pursue different approaches to this, but a defined process like this may make this easier down the road, when we come to coordinate with the court on the need to enact this abatement order, to have the authority to go forth and clean up the property. As far as the rarity goes, so, there's been a, historically, in this, I say historically, and that would be my time in code enforcement, I think there was probably two or so cases, and we're talking 15 years ago. In more recent years, we've had to do abatement in a handful of instances, and they've been, you know, solid waste-wise, probably lesser violations, but yet, abatement was the only way we're going to get at it. There was an instance in the past five or six years where there was a failing septic system on a property, and we did pursue some type of abatement to correct that violation. So again, in summary, we have the ability right now, but it's not a procedure, we don't have a defined procedure for this, and some jurisdictions have developed this procedure. You know, and I got to think that part of our research project would be to canvass those other jurisdictions and find out, how much are you using this, and how effective has this been for you? To paint a complete picture for a decision on this, and whether to go forward on developing the abatement code.
And so the direction is, should we explore it and bring back some options, really?
Yeah.
You don't need to provide a decision today.
You support kind of just proceeding with it, see what it looks like, and talk about it a little bit more?
Seems like it makes sense.
Okay. I agree.
Well, it would be interesting to know that, let's say, in six months, how our code specialists, compliance specialists, having a full staff, if it has, if that helps make a difference. I mean, I feel like, you know, the team is, I know they work really hard, I know they've had a lot of cases, and just, you know, will it really help? Being fully staffed, you know, because of the need, the demand. And of course, Nick, you will let us know, right?
Yes, absolutely. Good, thank you very much. So we'll go on to the next page. Should the county explore amending the solid waste code with respect to nuisance accumulations on private property? This is, to dive into this one just a little, in just a little bit more detail, it's been very helpful to have conversations with Tim Shimke, and just understanding his perspectives on this code and what it means. And in his perspective, it really is those issues, those nuisance cases, where there is, for lack of a better term, environmental damage or environmental harm, there's leakage of an old tank that's into the ground, something of that nature. And our code enforcement program has interpreted this a bit differently over the years, based on interpretations that we've made, where it's been some unsightly issues. And John, you can describe this better than I can. And we've kind of defined what that means on a case-by-case basis. So that's, one piece is, do we look at this, just with a fresh lens of 2021, what has changed in state law to bring this part of the code up into compliance with state law? So is it worthwhile for us to take a look at this? And John, Angie, I would turn it over to you, because you've had even additional, more conversations with Tim than I have recently on this.
Yeah, I can jump in. I wasn't sure whether you were talking to Angie or me?
I wasn't sure either, it cut out for a second. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead and jump in on this. Historically, and we've talked about this as staff, when we're talking about, you know, should we maybe update this code? But historically, for code enforcement in the solid waste code, we really have been looked at as having the ability to address ISO or properties. The solid waste code, as it's written, kind of gets you there. There's a definition of solid waste. Interestingly enough, this code, it's kind of dual purpose. For one, maintaining a nuisance accumulation of solid waste on your property. But two, the definition of solid waste helps in defining what the landfill does, and what materials can go in there. One of the things that it's been expressed in this procedures manual review, we've bandied about, one man's junk is another man's trash, or that's something that we, very much a part of what we do when we look at a solid waste complaint, an ISO complaint. And we look at the code, the definition of the code, and what constitutes solid waste, and that oftentimes allows us to address the ISOs. If we see an accumulation of materials, examples, indoor furniture sitting outside in significant quantities, or significant array, large quantities of demo material, building materials, splayed about a property, those are the types of complaints that we get, or scenarios we get for the ISO, and there are elements of a solid waste violation here. One of the challenges we have with the code is that it doesn't specifically talk about these ISOs, and/or these unsightly properties, that's the better term, that's actually used in some other jurisdictions terminology, as far as what constitutes a nuisance violation. So in talking about this with staff, there is an opportunity, it seems, and maybe this opportunity is a ripe one, given that the solid waste department may need to update their code, opportunity for us to, again, canvas other jurisdictions and find out what their code is specifying is constituting a nuisance condition on a property, and then coordinating with the board to discuss that, and the opportunity to update the code. Of course, coordinating at the same time with the solid waste department to meet their needs.
So Commissioners, the direction here would be, if you're interested in us exploring some potential updates to the solid waste code, and then we could bring back options for your consideration and discussion in somewhat of a matrix format? Or just leave it as is and continue?
I've got a question for you. Have you ever had a spouse call on the other one for their unsightly?
Well, we've had, we've definitely had households internally turn each other in for code enforcement, or especially if one's not on the property and the other one, oh yeah, that's, those are not fun.
Well, my wife has done that to me a few times over there, get rid of that junk. I'm like, honey, that is a treasure, I'll put it behind the garage, you know?
But she hasn't called code enforcement.
She has not called code enforcement, no.
Well, my husband was putting my treasures in a dumpster once.
See, it happens, spouses, see?
It was, there were pictures, irreplaceable pictures. Oh my God, he was just getting boxes of them dumped. Thank goodness, someone knew better.
Well, yeah, so once again, I mean, it seems like it's a ripe conversation, it'll be interesting if it, you know, proceeds, we'll just talk about it a little bit, maybe just a standard place to go, or it could get, it could, you know, provide a lot of input from the community, so either way.
Well, if, we're talking about the solid waste code from 1991, so is that something that you guys can take a look at?
Yes.
You can? Okay. I would think it might be appropriate, what is that, 30 years ago? Isn't it 30 years ago, 1991? Yeah. So, yeah, I think it would be good.
We will do so. Great.
Good.
Thank you. And this is our last column, unless you have any others, and I keep, I kind of tee these up, and then John really does the heavy lifting on most of these. Our code, and this is what I was literally trying to print before we came over, so I do have it right here, are the priorities, and the priority order in which we address code enforcement issues, especially if we're in some sort of a triage mode, where we have more cases than our staff's able to handle at any one time, we really focus on those that are going to have the greatest impact on public health, life, and safety. Or, in some cases, it's going to be on what we call Goal Five, which is Goal Five, the statewide planning program, which addresses natural resources, environmentally sensitive areas, some open spaces, some scenic areas. And the question is, should we expand those lists, or should we reprioritize? So that's it at a high level. John, do you want to just frame this discussion as well, and how we approach this, and what changes might look like for the board's consideration?
Sure. So Priority One cases are those violations that present an imminent threat to public health and safety, as Nick said. Violations, Priority Number Two are violations that affect rivers, streams, and adjacent riparian areas. Okay, so that's what's in the manual today. And our question, one of our primary questions on this item, is should we be updating this So one thing that's not listed on here is, what about wetlands? Or what about perhaps other Goal Five resources? There's an opportunity here, if the board would like to see us bump up some other types of, and these would appear to be land use types of violations, but with these Goal Five resources. Moving down that list, the next priority of cases, and, you know, coming back to the manual, solid waste violations, we've put in there environmental soils violations, those unauthorized waste disposal violations, then building code violations. So that's Priority Three, and then Priority Four are other zoning violations. So those other zoning violations that aren't ones affecting environmental resources, the rivers, streams, riparian areas.
So one thought I have is that, it's a resource, it's a resource discussion, and I have a hunch that you, that the group, code enforcement group automatically kind of has a feel for the ones that would be a higher priority than others. You know, I mean, I would give you that latitude to know, oh, this is more important than that one today, or in this month, or whatever the concepts are. So I wouldn't come at it for that reason, you know, the decision space. But if the board can help by putting priorities on it, I'm not opposed to doing that. I'm just trying to talk it out, you know what I'm trying to understand? So as I say, I have a hunch that, yeah, you guys could figure that out right away, you know, what's important, what's the priority? But if you're pointing out the fact that, you know, the environmental issues, land use, environmental type issues, Goal Five resources, if it's hard to get them in the priority, and it's a policy choice to do it, I guess, yeah, let me know. Any other thoughts?
I'm just looking at the lists, the current lists, on page six of the manual, and, yeah, the fact that we talk about violations affecting rivers, streams, adjacent riparian areas, but we're not talking about wetlands, and we don't specifically call out, you know, groundwater resources. It just seems, it does seem a little outdated. So from that respect, worth revisiting, you know, in my opinion, worth revisiting. But, you know, to go along with Commissioner DeBonne, maybe you guys could just, you guys can make the recommendations.
Yeah, and maybe it is just kind of the paragraphs, the vision, because then it gives you the authority to do what you need to do day to day. But, yeah, putting some words around it, that's maybe a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's exactly what we were hoping for, is if you're open to that, we'll bring back, as John's already done such a remarkable job with his draft edits already, to this version, we would bring back some options for you to consider, and if, we just want to make sure you're open to that, rather than just assuming that we could.
Well, and it's the reading public that this matters to also.
Exactly.
Why haven't you responded to this yet? Well, here's our priorities, this is why we do it, and this is how the process works. So it's the reading public getting confidence that this is why we're doing what we're doing and how we do it. Okay, we made it to some matrices here. Anything else on that topic?
For us, there's not. If, I think we have very clear direction, if there's anything else the board wants us to look at now, you're welcome, I mean, of course, we're always open, or if something else comes up as we continue down this process, please let us know, we'll be happy to research, analyze, provide more information. And given that the changes are pretty minimal, my suggestion is that we bring back some of those concepts for your consideration and for discussion, and then maybe the public input at the public hearing process is the most significant. We didn't know if there were going to be any major changes to the program, and if so, that may be ripe for a much greater public involvement. So we'll certainly have the public involved in the process, it's just, given that the initial changes might be fairly minimal, and maybe there's more, maybe the board wants to hear from the public more if we're going to be discussing the solid waste code in more detail, or something of that nature, we'll keep all of those options open. But at this point, we'll take the direction that we've received from you today, and bring back and schedule another work session with some of those suggested options and revisions for your consideration.
Yeah, I see another whole memo about how we're going to take these forward now.
Perfect.
And actually, I really do want to hear from the public on this, because, you know, comments are made off and on over the past two years, and would appreciate hearing from them at that time, so.
Great, yeah, well, and we'll, yeah, we'll do it in the future.
Thank you very much.
Could I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
There was, when we were talking about that anonymous marijuana complaints, there was the, that data point, that there had been seven, seven complaints. Do we, do we know how those were resolved, or, you know, whether, like, you know, this complaint was validated, and, you know, this was a problem, or this was, people were concerned that someone was growing marijuana, but it was actually hemp, like, do we, could we get a snapshot of what happened with those seven, you know, seven code complaints?
Would you like for Dan to address that now, or would you like for us to address that in a follow-up memorandum?
Maybe in a follow-up, but.
Okay, we can, yes, we can do that. Dan, we track all of our complaints from start to finish, and how from start to finish and how they were resolved.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thanks for joining us today.
And Tom?
Thank you.
Maybe we could ask the sheriff to give us what their enforcement has come up with. Remember, we, we had that great report a year or two ago, and maybe they could come back in and let us know what kind of a situation they're seeing in the county. I don't think we've had an update, have we lately?
Yeah, well, that'd be great. That'd be good.
So, yeah. Because I have seen the numbers, and they were significant.
Okay, so that was the end of our regular agenda. We do have executive session today. So it'll be a little stand-up break and a transition. Any, any other item to get to right before that? Okay, so we're going to take a three-minute break to transition to executive session under 1926602H litigation. And let me know. Okay, we're good. So we are out of executive session. It's 10 minutes to four, Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. And the guidance is to proceed as discussed, an executive session on two matters. Anything else? Any other items? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.